Good evening. We're gonna welcome everyone to our City of Palaca March 24th, 2022 meeting. At this time, we'll call the meeting to order. Gonna ask if Brother Johnson could lead us in the pledge and we'll have Brother Randy Johnson lead us in the invocation. Well, we got Pastor Mobery on to lead us in the invocation. So Brother Johnson, could you lead us in the pledge?
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please stand for the invocation, please.
Father, again, we thank you for this day. We thank you for your love and kindness and certainly, God, for the multitude of your tender mercy. Here we are once again to conduct business in your name. I pray, God, that the wisdom of your will would be upon the hearts and minds of your people. I pray, God, that you will bless us with peace. Give us civility, God, as we come together for your glory. I pray for every participant, God. I pray that your will be done in the lives of your people. God bless our city. We need a touch from you. God only you can help us. In Jesus' name we pray. Thank God. Amen.
Go call, please.
Commissioner Tammy McCastle.
Here.
Commissioner Will Jones. Commissioner Justin Campbell.
President. Mr. Campbell's president on Zoom.
Commissioner Rufus Boram.
President.
Mayor Terrell Hill.
Here.
We have a forum in the chamber, sir.
Thank you. At this time, has everyone had an opportunity to review the minutes from our February 28th City Commission Workshop?
Motion to accept minutes is written.
Is there a second? I've got one correction to the motions to the minutes. If we look. If we look at the recommendations on the back of the minutes for that particular meeting, under the item that's labeled as mental health, the only thing that's missing is a hundred thousand dollar recommendation for appropriation. It was for mental health, and it was for violent prevention. And so that money was to be allocated to both areas, since they work side to side, they coincide. And so it was for for violent crime prevention as well. And so if we can make that notation, if that's friendly to the motion, then that'll be fun.
And one other minor, I guess, modification would be the, I think, it stated that I mentioned about the homelessness or the how it could be funded as it relates to pulling from, I guess, employee contribution. That need to be for homelessness, I don't think it referenced homelessness.
So.
So just need to reference homeless, and I just think it just, I think there was a statement in there that stated.
It's, may I? Commissioner Boram expressed if each person gave a small contribution from their paychecks, it would help tackle the homelessness situation.
Okay, unless I'm, this, I guess, I hone in on different area, but thank you, appreciate it.
Any other corrections or exceptions? Seeing as that's friendly to the motion in the second. Any other comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Motion carries unanimously. Also, have you an opportunity to review the minutes from the March tenth, two thousand and twenty-two meeting? We're taking a motion at this time.
Motion to accept minutes is written.
Second.
There's a motion on the floor, the second, is there any readiness? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, motion carries unanimously. Next up, we'll go to public recognitions and presentations. First up is Student of the Month. And so we'll have our Student of the Month, it's, we have a few, I see a couple faces in here who appeared in person, we have some on Zoom as well. For the individuals who are present, when your name is called, you can come up and get your award since you're present tonight as well. Commissioner Boram will hand you your award out. And so before we get started with our Student of the Month, assembled in Zoom land, are our educators who work tirelessly to work with our children, who are tirelessly with our children, who dedicate much of their personal time, as well as their professional career towards the development of young people in this community. We have the fortune of having a commission that everyone in some aspect has worked in education. But we also understand the value of really building our youth, and so we want to make sure that we give a round of applause to our educators for the sacrifices that they make for our young people. It's always good to see a retired principal from Creekside High School, Randy Johnson in the audience with us tonight. He's an educator out of St. John's County, who's world famous on the other side of the county line. And so it's always good to have us, raise your hand for us today, let's give him a round of applause. And also, the parents and the loved ones, the parents, loved ones and friends who are assembled around the room and in Zoom, who really work with these young people on a day-to-day basis when they leave school, because it truly takes a village to raise a child. But let's give them a round of applause for the work they've done and made. So at this time, we will present our March two thousand and twenty-two Students of the Month. We've got a very familiar last name coming up this time, she's the fourth of many in the Dollar family, so I guess that's gonna pay off at some point, no pun intended. First up, Browning Pierce Elementary School, Logan Dollar. Logan, I think you had a little pressure on you to make it this time. Next up. Children's Reading Center Charter School. Sheila Patterson. Next slide. Hillcrest Academy, Aubrey Reed. James A. Long Elementary School, Jacob Slater. Kelly Smith Elementary School, Salem Harrington, isn't she precious? From the Mellon Learning Center pre-K, Cole Cross. Mr. McCastle School.
And educator Deborah King in the audience.
Mellon Learning Center, K through twelve, Edgar Hernandez. And from Mosley Elementary School, Richard R.J. Session. And you made sure you had the, you had your shirt on, too. From our Palaca Junior Senior High School, Samantha Clark. And Alabama's Academy, Reenie Chin. From Putnam Academy of Arts and Sciences, Cole Roberts. Putnam Edge High School, Sonny Bird. This concludes our Student of the Month ceremonies for this year, but I'd like to give Commissioner Boram an opportunity to give a few words before we close out.
Yes, as always, we always like to have our Student of the Months, and we would love for them to continue shooting for the stars. Even if you miss a star, you are laying among the, you, even if you shoot them up among the stars, you're laying among the moon. So continue to do your very best in your classroom, and let that continue to go forth in your future career, higher education, and your professional career. So we thank your parents and everybody who is instilling, contributed to your education, and we want to thank you.
And so for you two, and for everyone assembled in Zoom land, I'm gonna leave you with something that we learned about forty-one years ago in this Greens third grade class. And we started every day out by saying that it simply says, I am somebody, if my mind can conceive it, and my heart can believe it, I know I can achieve it, because I am somebody. You're somebody great, you're destined for greatness, we are so proud of you from the city of Palaca, and we're looking forward to you being the leaders of tomorrow. Continue the great works that you're doing, and make sure that you never let anybody stop you from being your best. So again, let's give them a round of applause. Let's give those stones one more round. I was trying to. Next up is our presentation. For support of foster children in Putnam County's Guardian Adlightum Program, Sarah Kerrigan.
Yes. For giving me the opportunity to be here and speak on behalf of the Guardian Adlightum Program. My name is Sarah Kerrigan, I'm a volunteer recruiter, I guess I'll just give you a little tap every time, if that sounds good, Sunny, you can go ahead to the next one. I'm a volunteer recruiter and community liaison for the Guardian Adlightum Program. It's a state program, we are here in the seventh judicial circuit, there are twenty circuits here in the state of Florida, and here in the seventh circuit. It includes Putnam, St. John's, Flagler, and Malushia Counties. I work in Flagler, Putnam, and St. John's. Our program has one mission, and that's to advocate for the child's best interest. The only purpose we have as a program, we work with children that have been abused, abandoned, and neglected. They've been removed from their home by no fault of their own, and they become wards of the state. The parents of those children have twelve months to work on what's called a case plan, where they're attached, in that there are things that have happened to that child that they have to rectify and change in order for reunification. It could be anything from housing, unemployment, domestic violence, drugs is our number one issue at this time. But these children have been abused, abandoned, or neglected, and removed from their home, as I said, by no fault of their own. Our program is set, we're based on volunteers, we have a very small staff right here in St. John's Avenue. Here in Palaca, we have four child advocate managers, and one program attorney, and one administrator. But we serve, right now, today, my numbers show three hundred and two, but we have three hundred and seventeen children today in Putnam County in dependency cases. Of those children, they're just under two hundred cases, but we have one hundred and thirty-three children in our county without a volunteer on their cases. There are about fourteen hundred of them here in our circuit, about five hundred that don't have volunteers on that multidisciplinary team. But I'm saying, you know, a hundred and thirty-four, that's a very large number for me as a recruiter. So I find this is a place that I'm really planning to focus this year. I like thinking that this is gonna be a year of storytelling, and I loved the beginning of this meeting, because I'm here representing these children that will be our future, that will be our tomorrow. And our program is a game changer. There is no doubt statistically, and through the people that I've met, and the personal experiences of these children that have been in foster care, we are a game changer for the future. What is a Guardian Adlightum? Well, we're part of a team, as I said, it's a multidisciplinary team with a child advocate manager and a program attorney. And what we do is we collect information so that we can present that to our judges of dependency cases, to give them the best understanding of what's in the best interest of those children. We are a multidisciplinary team, as I said, we are judicial team, so we have an attorney on every case. But we have a volunteer who's thinking outside the box, they're going to visit that child, and learning how to help them extracurricularly, academically, medically, however, we can advocate for what we call normalcy. What we would want every child to have, to have that normal opportunity to feel like they have the confidence and self-esteem of anybody in a stable home. We are the only constant person as a volunteer guardian light in that child's life, as that one person there for their sole best interest. We are the voice for that child in court, and we are the ears and eyes for that judge for those children. What do we do as a guardian adlightum? We visit once a month, so we make sure to lay eyes on those children, make sure physically that they're okay, we ask them what their needs are, we communicate, collaborate, commit to those children, and collectively find ways that we can make their lives more enhanced and better. We write reports, we write reports to those judges when those judicial reviews and other kinds of court hearings come up, they attend court. And we will write reports to that judge, recommend what we feel is in the best interest of that child through our observations. And there's other meetings, there might be school meetings, maybe the child is in a situation where they're behind, they might have issues at school. We will go to those school hearings, meetings, anything that we can to help advocate for those children. It takes about, it says here, ten to twelve hours a month, life is fluid, our cases are fluid. I would say most of the time, it's probably a little bit less than ten hours a month. But I can't tell you what a parent's gonna do, I can't tell you what a child's gonna do, we have a lot of changes in direction that happen. But we're here to represent those children and to support them, and as those happen, that's what we're doing. As I said, these cases can last twelve months, because that's how long the state gives these parents for reunification. Sometimes it lasts longer, we have cases that last two years, sometimes even three, because of trying to collect the information and find permanency for these children. How can you guys help? Number one, let's just remember what we've been talking about, at these children that have been removed and that come into foster care without a guardian, generally speaking, anyway, whether they have one or not, they're gonna have an increased risk, a higher rate of poverty, addiction, homelessness, going back into the welfare system, maybe becoming adult criminal parts of our courts, taking time, energy, and money out of our tax paying dollars. This is really amazing, you guys, look at these numbers. When you have a child advocate volunteer on a dependency case, it's fifty-two percent less if they're gonna skip school, fifty-nine percent more that they're gonna have better grades, with fifty-five percent more enrolling in secondary education. Think about that, that's food going beyond that J E D, finding a trade, G E B, finding a trade, something that goes on to finding that passion. Fifty percent less into reenter into foster care. Anybody here that's played a sport knows what you got out of that opportunity and that experience of what happens when you're out there working as a teen. And I love this, thirty percent more likely to have a leadership role. Thinking about our children in our future, I think that's a really powerful statement. Thirty-three percent fewer placements with that child advocate volunteer, they're gonna be looking out what kinds of services do they need? Do they need to catch up with reading? Did they get to see their dentist? What kinds of things have they not done, what have they done? Maybe they just need a uniform to be a part of the soccer team. They're gonna have higher levels of hope because they have somebody that cares about them. And anybody that has somebody to talk to tends to have better coping skills, just to be able to get something off your chest, being able to say, this is what I'm going. I've just had to move to my third foster home, and now it's the third school. It's a lot of uncertainty. I think the three hundred and sixty-five days of going to sleep, not knowing where to go to sleep the next morning. We are part of a multidisciplinary team, as I said, we do not have many staff, we are based on our volunteers, but we work in conjunction as a multidisciplinary team with that child advocate manager, the on the cam, and our PAs, our program attorneys, that keep us within those judicial lines. You just have to be twenty-one years or older, past fingerprint background check, have a strong desire to help these children, be able to communicate what you see and observe. Hopefully have a computer so that these things can be put into our program, and understand that it can be at least twelve months. So it sounds good, I'll tell you how you can do it. The application is on our state website, www.guardianadlightum.org, fill it out, make an appointment to come see me for an information session right here, five eighteen St. John's Avenue, right down the street from the courthouse. Our staff is there, we'll talk about the role of the volunteer, the mission of our program. All of our training right now is online. We make sure all of our volunteers stay, start with that same platform, because we're going from newborns seventeen years old. You know, it can change very much in those variations, depending on what age that you're working with, and if it's one child or more. And as we said, you start with that peer mentor and that cam, we always, in our circuit here in the seventh circuit, we found it highly valuable to start with a mentor volunteer that's been with the program. So that there's somebody that can go to that home with you when they first, at first visit to that foster home, and help you assess how to communicate, to observe, and document what you do for our courts. you assess how to communicate, to observe, and document what you do for our courts. Again, you know, this is a volunteer position. It is absolutely up to the volunteers' protocol, as they feel comfortable, whether they would like to do this visits at this time with Zoom, FaceTime. Our cams can take those visits if it's physical. As I said, it's absolutely up to the volunteers' protocol. The most important thing I ask of you guys tonight is just to hear who I am here representing. As I said, we have a needle that we can move. Excuse me. This is so important because being able to catch these children now, to help them find a passion, to give them the purpose, to give them that path, is how we change our community. And everybody here, I'm sure there's at some point in your life you could think of one person that was a game changer for you, that helped you understand how good you were, whether it was math, whether it was leadership, whether it was architecture, it doesn't matter what it is. We all have been born with gifts and talents, and everybody should have the opportunity to be able to utilize that and find a path that gives them that purpose in life. So think about, go back one second if you would mind, thank you. Think about those places that we can talk, in the churches in our community, likely the country, to book clubs, to those organizations where those like-minded people are, where those are that will be put in. It doesn't even have to be a case caring volunteer. You can come and help just with those visits. Every one of my cases, those child advocate managers in our office have to have fifty pieces. So if you think about that, that's one or more children that have been abused, abandoned, neglected in all of those spaces. And with a hundred and thirty-four not having a volunteer, we're missing some pieces that we can help support them. Houses of worship, one of my favorite places. We were talking, I was hearing a conversation this morning, or excuse me, this evening before we started about Baltimore. My father is a retired Episcopal priest. I used to go down to Fells Point downtown Baltimore, which was a pretty bad area back in, I'll tell you, it was in the eighties. But it was, we used to go to the Stu kitchen. And it was an amazing opportunity to see how little you could do to make a difference in someone's life. So think of those places, those houses of worship, those places of business. Get those brochures, get that, anything up there that just plants that seed that recognizes this is the weakest part of our community. How can we support them? I do recruitment events. Reach out to me. You don't have to be a volunteer to talk about our program. Help us with our social media. That's one of our number one opportunities right now for recruitments is going on Facebook, Nextdoor, Instagram. Our Facebook and Instagram pages are superhero, it's the next one, superhero for a child. And then, do we have another one up here, Lauren? There it is. And then Guardian Ad Lighton Seventh Circuit for Facebook. We also have a great opportunity to purchase license plates. These are just about to come out, so go to our Florida Foundation's website there if you'd like to put that on your car and show your support for our program. Lauren, one more? There we go. Two different places you can help us financially. Fostering Connections Florida was started about four years ago. Aubrey Simpson, Dr. Max, he started it in St. John's County. Found the calling in Putnam to be great. Opened it up here. Changed your name. It used to be Fostering Connections St. John's. It's now Fostering Connections Florida because we have the need in Malusha, Putnam, Deval, and Flagler, as well as St. John's. We also have a Guardian Ad Lighton Foundation. Go to that website. There are all kinds of ways you can do things inside the office. Hopefully, there are ways that you guys can think about outside that box to have that conversation of how we can change as part of our community. This is just a little example of finding a purpose and a passion and a path. Ashley Rhodes Porter was a foster child for nine years. I talk about two years, sometimes children language, because if they don't have a guardian, there's no one there to help expedite that permanency and help them find those things that will create that forever home of stability and love. Nine years, a hundred and ninety-five people, one guardian ad light. Pretty powerful stuff. So thank you, guys. I hope I didn't take up too much time. I am grateful for the opportunity to talk about our mission and the children that we serve.
For your program, you said you go from zero to seventeen?
Yes.
So when you, when you get a child who comes in around sixteen, seventeen years old, about to graduate, so when you get them during that period of time, how do you see what their success looked like after that, if you follow them?
It's such a good question because, again, we're trying to think outside the box. When children age out of our program, one of the most important things they need are friends and mentors because without those, it's much more challenging to find employment and housing. And if you don't have employment and housing, that's when we have people living on the street. That's when we get our homeless. That's where we have people that, you know, are causing dysfunction in our community. So that's a perfect example of finding a church that's willing to help these kids learn to drive. We have some different programs through ours, the Sheriff's Department, Florida Sheriff's Association has funding. There's different ways of teaching these kids to drive, being a mentor just as a driver, someone that can help them drive. But that seventeen-year-old is a crucial time to have somebody in your life that is there to be able to assist in that first initial time. And I'm sure a lot of you guys can think about that first time, maybe if you ever were living alone, that first night you just left alone, even if you did have family, if you had mentors, if you had friends. For me personally, it was a scary time. You know, it's a time of uncertainty.
Any other questions, comments from the commission? Well, we definitely thank you for coming forward today. Worked for a number of years in dependency, working on dependency cases. My sister's been about, about twenty-five years with the Department of Children and Families doing foster care placement, as well as some other services, her and Ms. King as well. So we've got a few people in this room who work from the social services side and some folks who are aware of the need for foster care placement as well, but also the need to have Garden Lightons in place. And so we definitely appreciate you being here for enlightening the community on the need for the services. Every, every stage of this game, every stage of this process needs citizens to be advocates for children for their best interest, and there's not enough of that in Putnam County. We oftentimes find ourselves sending kids to other counties and even to South Georgia in some instances because we can't find enough volunteers in Putnam County. And so if it's, if it's on your heart or if you want to be a part of this, we encourage you to do so because it's critical to the upbringing of our children who've been abused, abandoned, or neglected. Next up, Employee of the Month Award, In the Spotlight.
Okay. On behalf of the city of Palacka, Jenny Jones, and I would just like to say we had this first second month in the spotlight to recognize our employees that have exemplified different characteristics in their work performance. This month, the city of Palacka would like to, the employee that was nominated out of seven nominees was Mandy Tucker. And we'll just recognize our sponsor for this month, gift to you with Abundant Life Ministry.
Mr. River?
Hope you don't mind, I want to kind of take this opportunity to talk about all of Mandy's contributions. And it is an appropriate time to distribute our grant report card. Ms. Thomas, if you could pass that along.
Oh, we thought that was your speech.
So Ms. Tucker's been with us six years and nine months. Been fun. Leave it at that.
It's been that long?
Yeah, I'll try to make this not like a retirement. Want you to stick around a little bit longer. Ms. Tucker's creative writing skills have allowed her, as you can see from this report card, for the city to fund and complete much-needed projects that otherwise would not get done. Our relationships with state agencies have improved, in my opinion, specifically those regulatory agencies and those that fund a lot of our much-needed projects. Look at the last page. That's the most recent year. You can see that almost fifteen million dollars has been brought in in the past fiscal year towards your capital projects. And Ms. Tucker is a very key piece in that effort. She has a knack for being, being able to convey complex problems related to water treatment, wastewater treatment, and the economic disadvantages that Palacka faces. Without her, I don't see how the city would be able to reshape itself in the coming years. Mandy, you're a valued team member. I really like working with you. You know, it probably doesn't seem like that some mornings at seven o'clock, but I try my best to put a smile on early, and we appreciate all that you do. Seriously, thank you for all your contributions.
I just want to say a really, thank you. It's wonderful being part of the team, and it really is a team effort. Thank you very much.
Again, Mandy, congratulations. And just in this quarter alone, I think we've announced almost seventeen million dollars in awards just off of the work of the team that Mandy heads up as we move forward in this community, and she's a great asset to the community. So, Mandy, again, thank you and congratulations. Public comments are next. Public comments will be limited to three minutes. No action will be taken on topics of discussion. If you're here to pour public comment, please fill out a yellow speaker's card. They are located in the back of the room on the wall. As you come up to the podium, please give your name and address for the record. Comments will be three minutes. Commissioner Campbell, are you on the clock?
Yes, sir, I am.
First up, Mr. Spail.
Good evening. My name is Jake Spail.
Is the light on? Okay. All right.
I live in Fifty-Ninth, Florida, Florida, Highway Twenty. I have three, two questions, one for the commission and one for the mayor. My concern is, why did you all dismount the code enforcement office? I can't understand that. Why did you get rid of them?
It's not, with their code enforcement exists.
Say that again?
Code enforcement exists. David Green's our code officer.
My reason for asking that is, I don't know if any of you have been on the North Side of town. You have a burnout structure on Tenth and Holly. Tenth and Madison, you have one on Nineteenth Street. You have one on Thirteenth Street, and you have another on Sixteenth and O. Anywhere on the North Side you go, it's particular. You have trash all around people's home, in the middle of the sidewalk and the street, and it hadn't been there just for a few days, it's been there for weeks. To the commission, how can you, and I think several of you are planning to run for office, what are you going to go tell these people? And you depressing them when they take their time, go out and vote for you, what are you going to do? My next question is to the mayor. You live in, on the North Side, in a three-block area, four, I would say. How can you pass there every day? And look at the deplorable condition that you have to pass? And you announced that you were running for mayor again. What are you going to tell the vote?
I'm going to tell them that I've been doing the same thing I've been doing for the last seven years and continually changing the conditions, including getting eight-point-one million dollars to change the way the streets look. I'm going to tell them that we're going to change the way that all of that works, the fact that the street sweepers come through the town for the first time in the community, and it hadn't been through there from the time in which I came in office, it wasn't hitting the North Side. We're going to tell them that we've raised the bar, and while you may see those things as you pass through town, I live there every day, and I know what's being cleaned up.
Well, I would certainly hate for them to come in and visit the town tomorrow because it looks worse than a third-world country.
Well, I invite you to come to my neighborhood and pick up trash when I pick it up in the neighborhood. So when you're ready to come help me, let me know. I'll come pick you up.
Well, from Sixth Street to Nineteenth Street, I wouldn't invite anybody to come over. And I, I noticed the article in the paper, you had three people said they're.
Mayor, Tom, is that right? I want to hear this.
Let me finish, please.
Trust me, I will.
On the North Side, and these three individuals don't even visit the North Side. So the mind don't know what the eyes can't see. And if they, this news, whoever the newspaper man, put there that these three people were leaders of the North Side, he has a degree from the University of Ignorance because he don't know what he's talking about, all the leaders that he put in the paper. I mean, it's just ridiculous. So I, I can't see, what are you all going to tell the voters that you're trying to do and what you're doing end up in a clog of a situation over here? And it's the worst streaks in the whole city. Why can't you all do something about that? And you can do something if you would come together and do it. There's no reason why you can't. It's just that you're not doing it. Thank you.
So let me ask you a question right quick. So when you saw the trash on the street, did you stop and pick it up? Did you stop and pick the trash up that you saw on the street?
Why should I pick it up?
Because you're going to be a part of the solution. If you're going to assess the problem, be a part of the solution.
Let me speak, let me speak. I shouldn't have to pick the trash up.
That's the mindset that has us where we are.
We pay taxes each year.
I do too. A lot.
Well, why don't you put those, you're in charge of the city, you the head of the city, the mayor. You should be standing up front on making sure this thing is done.
You're a senior in this community. You should be leading my example as well. It's not one-man show. It's a community.
Well, why don't you lead the charge?
Mr. Spails, I'll lead the charge when you start helping me lead the charge. So when you paint your building and look like my plaza, then I come help you, and we can go around this community and make the whole thing look a lot better.
I'm not going to pick up any trash because I pay taxes, more taxes than a lot of people make.
So have a good day. Time's up.
Why should I have to do that? And there are things in place where you got, you got the city people who have the trash sanitation and everything. Why is this particular area in the condition that it is, and we have five black commissioners not doing a damn thing?
Well, Mr. Spails, at that point.
It's just ignorance on you all.
At that point, your time is up.
Okay, thank you. I mean, I understand, I understand.
You can talk until you're Mount Fry Chicken, but you can sit down. You can sit down, sir. You can sit down as a man. Have a great day. No, sir. Go ahead. We won't even address that anymore. Sylvester Brinson.
How y'all doing? Um, I'm here to just complain about, see if y'all can take a second look into the killing, the shooting killing at the college a couple of years, three years back. There's only, only witness statement that y'all have is the police statement, but nobody else was there. But I'm here to let y'all know that I was there. I was at the red light. Matter of fact, where the, where the truck ended up at, and the body ended up at, he almost hit me. I'm saying, I seen it from the beginning to the end. I heard what I heard, I seen what I seen, and I witnessed what I witnessed. But by the time I went down the road, I changed my mind, I turned around to come back to find out what was going on, I seen the body on the ground, they had a stash out of the truck, but I did not know. But I did not know this was my best friend Jamie at the time. So only way I can find out what was going on, I saying that I'm wait, I seen this, I seen this happening. You know, you had to go to your neighborhood barber shop, car wash, uh, beauty salon or something like that, uh, and get, and he's some kind of information. So I went to my brother's car wash, and I, I told him what hap- what happened that early that morning. Because I was there. I was there. Know what I'm saying? Then that's when he told me who it was. Our best friend. That I lived a hundred feet away from growing up. So I'm, I'm, I'm just standing here and saying, I will, I want to apologize to the family because I haven't came, I took, it took a lot for me to come up here today. It took me years to come here to save this in front of everybody, in front of Facebook or whatever. Know what I'm saying? Well, I was there. I was at that red light. I was there, I'm telling you, he was no forty, fifty feet away from me, almost hit me, but I cut behind the vans and put my head down because I heard all the shots. I heard the shots, and I seen what happened. So I'm, I'm, the most of what I'm saying, was over the street saying, he wa- at first, he was a suspect. But how I'm looking at it right now, as I'm looking at it, I keep thinking about it. And I know my friend. My friend turned into a victim. So I might say, y'all, can y'all please take time out and look back into that again? And I will talk to whoever need to be, be spoken to and give them a statement that I would, I go footstep, footstep was told, I came back up to the, uh, to the scene of the crime three times to talk to someone, but I did not know who to trust. And it took all these years for me to come up here now and say this here now. Know what I'm saying? I wouldn't be here now but for my brother telling me, you need to tell your story. Now I can feel, now I feel better, I can go ahead and lay down and relax. Know what I'm saying? But I'm letting, I'm letting y'all, I'm letting everybody know. I wanted to do it last, uh, last meeting, but that was my first time ever coming to these meetings. And this is my second meeting. I don't know if I might make it back again. Because I didn't, most of the stuff I hear, I too much didn't like. I'm saying, I don't be into all of that, back and forth. Y'all doing a wonderful job. To me, y'all are. Know what I'm saying? Not just for the blights. Y'all doing a wonderful job for everyone. But I'm just asking that y'all look back into that though and get a second, third opinion about it. And I will talk to whoever I need to talk to. So I'm gonna take time and to find the, find the rest of the family to apologize to them because I see them sometime in the store and speak to them and say hello. But in my mind, I know, I know what I see. Y'all have a good day.
Before you leave, Mr. Brinson, um, Chief, can you get with it? Okay, wanna make sure we get everything that you need in place so we can go from there. It's oftentimes a difficult thing for people to come forward in any type of situation where we need citizens to speak up in, in all our situations that we have because it helps law enforcement out as we begin to make certain decisions of what goes on. And so we're glad to have, to have Mr. Brinson come forward. Casey Williams is next.
Good evening. My name is Casey Williams, I live at 129 North B Street, Black Forest, Florida. The speech I had prepared is definitely not what I'm gonna say. And there's some things I wasn't gonna say that now I'm gonna say. So, and I promise I wash my mouth. So what I came to talk about was the kids in our community. In the last month, we have, I face this way, but I speak this way. We have blamed every form of entity, entity as far as this one blaming this one, and this one blaming this one, and this one blaming this one. But if we have never been in the mayor's shoes, the commissioner's shoes, the sheriff's shoes, any of the police department's shoes, the deputy's shoes, code enforcement, if we've never been in their shoes, we don't know what they have to deal with. We don't know what things they've tried and what they have not tried. What we can look at is what we have tried as citizens, as parents in our community. Our children are being bullied. If you haven't noticed, there is a lot of violence that does go on in the school. And I'm not going to pinpoint PCSD whatsoever. I'm not gonna pinpoint any entity because like I just said, we don't know what they've tried and what they haven't. But there are children that are being targeted by kids in our communities who are actual gang members. And you have kids who are forced in formation for protection who by definition are not gang members. They're just friends who now cannot walk alone because they're being jumped on their way to school. I can say this for when I have three boys, they're sixteen, fourteen, and thirteen. But I'm also a mentor in our community, I'm a coach, I'm a family member, I'm an auntie, I'm a mom, I'm a second mom. And I see so many of our children go through so many different things. I have spent the last three weeks going to the school, not to chastise the school, not at all, but to give support to parents where their child has been attacked on the way to school, where their child has been cyberbullied or taunted while in school. And there's nothing being, there's not really much that's being done about that. So then I take this back this way. What are we doing as citizens in our community to stop this? I can only control so much. With the friends that my son has, we have implemented the buddy system. None of my son's friends are allowed to walk. And I don't mean they can or can't because they're gonna do what they wanna do. But they are not allowed to walk home. If after school, I see that they're about to walk home alone, you can get in my car, I'm gonna take you home because that, that's a safety issue to me. So I say this because we cannot continue to blame our city commission, our county commission, our sheriffs, our police department, and ask what are they doing to get it done when we ourselves haven't asked ourselves, what are we doing to stop these kinds of things? Are we active parents in our own children's lives? Say one more time.
Wrap it up.
Oh, thank, okay. What are we doing as, as parents? Are we active in our children's lives? Are we active in the school? We're gonna have to step up as citizens and find a way to get these kids to direct their, direct their, or channel their energy into a more positive, positive way, if that makes any sense.
It does, sir. Thank you. Frida King.
Hello, my name is Frida King Williams. I live at 804 Olive Street. Um, I have code violations on my house. And I've come to ask for help. I live in my house. I'm not, I'm about to cry, but I'm not gonna do it. I'm not an abandoned landlord, meaning that, you know, I live in there, and I'm the landlord. Please use the CDBG dollars to help. Help me get historical money from USDA. And may I ask, can I have a little longer time than thirty days, please?
So you have active code case now? Mr. Cutright, can you talk to her? So we got time? Okay. Thank you for coming on, Ms. King. Ms. Kennedy? You're welcome, thank you.
Hey, what? Patrick Kennedy, transitioning from Creston City to Black Forest. My new address is 673 Third Avenue, Black Forest, Florida, 22193. I'm here on behalf of my client, Jim McMahon. Just to update you on the code enforcement matter that he's dealing with at 720 St. John's Avenue. You folks heard this in October for a lien, fine reduction and lien release subject to completing the demolition of that building. And we've been working hard, I said, he's been working hard the first couple of months. He was struck down by, struck down, he's still alive, but he was hit by COVID pretty hard, hospitalized for a couple of weeks, and I had to, still actually just now coming out from home care. And I've had to step in and try to help him get it done. But we have done several things towards compliance. We're actually hoping to have permits first part of next week, well, apply for permits. And that's one reason why we're a little concerned about meeting our, currently it's our April 26 deadline. So I just want to let you know what we have accomplished. One of the things we did do is we were able to acquire the property next door, the old sports bar, which is also in an equally dilapidated condition, not subject to any code enforcement cases by the city. But we acquired it, and it's a shared wall issue there anyway. So it kinda helps my client be able to tear down his property and that property at the same time. So it's kind of, the town's, city's getting a two-for-one deal, really, with my client's efforts to tear down 714, which needs to go, and seven, and 720 also. We were working with the adjoining property owners, all the, all these buildings butt up right against each other, you know how downtown is. So coordinating the efforts has taken some time. And dealing with the AME church is probably the biggest issue we had with the two walls being shared there and people encroaching on other people's properties. So we've been working hard to try to get those issues resolved. We had to do an investor survey and a, a statement. We had to, uh, we retained the engineers, Robert, and architect, Robert Taylor here in town. He's just finishing up his design. We've also resurveyed the property to locate, to get a locate the building line in relation to the properties. We've accomplished a lot, but we're a little nervous about meeting our deadline now. So we just wanted to let you know what we've done. And we're hoping that we can get, we've been talking to staff the last couple of weeks to try to get an extension of time of at least thirty days. We think that'll be enough. If we can get the permits, it won't take long to, to get the demolition done. So we're gonna need another thirty days probably just to be, to be safe rather than try to meet a tight deadline. I understand we're in a, a three-minute public comment section, and you're not supposed to make decisions, but just wanted to give you a heads up and, uh,
You understand all too well, huh?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. All too well.
City manager of Creston City.
Yes. But anyway, just wanted to know, we've got a contractor in place, we've got engineer and architects finishing up their work. We're pulling permits next week, we hope, or applying for permits. We've done these best to debate, we've done a lot of work to try to get it where it is. My client's health issues didn't help the matter much. You know, this is really his project. Me stepping in has helped, but I've been, haven't been able to focus on it like he was when he was well. So, but in the meantime, we've got a lot done. We're moving towards com- uh, compliance, proactively spending money and getting it done. And just want to let you know that and hoping that we can work out a situation with, I'm not much sure exactly how you guys do it here, but working out a situation with staff where we can get a little extra time. And again, make you guys happy, clean up that 700 block that's a long and long need of, uh, some assistance.
If I'm not mistaken, and again, since it wasn't on the agenda, I really am not prepared to talk to it in detail. But if I'm not mistaken, this was a matter that came before the commission on a request for a reduction of a lien amount.
It was six, it was six, it was a six-month allowance.
And you gave them six months to bring the property into compliance, in which case you would drop the rather substantial fines down to ten thousand. Otherwise, they would revert back to the full amount. And so if I'm understanding correctly, placing things in context, he's, Mr. Kennedy's anticipating that they may not make the 180-day timeframe.
Correct.
But staff won't really be in a position to adjust that. It would have to be the commission because only the commission can make the lien reduction just as a matter of jurisdiction. So staff's not going to go out there on the 180th day and do anything, but really would take commission action to do something, you know, to extend the timeframe of the 180 days. It might very well be that, uh, just a suggestion that, uh, proceed that, that the applicant or Mr. Kennedy's client proceed with the attempts to bring the property into compliance, even if it exceeds 180 days. Once that, once that property's been brought into compliance, coming back before the commission, explain to the commission that the, that the property's in compliance and how much time has elapsed past the 180 days, and then the commission can go from there.
Last, our last meeting in, in April is the, the 28th. It's, it is the 28th. So can we bring this back on the 28th to see where we are from a progress standpoint?
Sure, we'll put on the agenda if it pleases the commission.
We'd even, we'd even be willing to do it at the first meeting in April to let you know where we're at. So you can.
Either way, it's fine.
How much is that lien?
Originally, I don't have the number, but it was stout.
It's two hundred and fifty dollars a day.
But we already reduced it to 10,000. No, 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 it's, it's, it's subject to being reduced to 10,000 based upon the demolition of the building, which, which had effects on two, on the, on the two buildings that were on each side and the building behind it.
Well, they were affecting each other, it wasn't just my.
Right.
Yeah, yeah. We had water coming from those other buildings into my client's property because they had filling gutters, and that's what caused his roof to collapse.
So let's bring it back to the first meeting, if that's okay with the commission. Let's bring it back first meeting in April, let's see where we are at that point. If you can, in the interim, I guess, get with, get with staff, who's, whoever's you've been communicating with thus far, with Mr. Cutright?
Yes.
And, um, and counsel, and then just give us an update as to where we are so that we can make the appropriate decision.
Yeah, we'll make sure there's something meaningful to talk about.
Yes, sir.
April meeting, thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else here for public comment at this time? Got two other cards for specific items. At this time, we'll go ahead and close public comment. We'll move into our consent agenda. On the consent agenda, we have items A through T. I'm gonna ask that S and T be removed, let any of the items from the consent agenda that you wish to have removed.
I would like, uh, item E, F, and I also remove for discussion.
Are there any other items? So.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda as, with the exception of E, F, I, S, and T.
Second on the floor, my Commissioner McCaslin, is any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries unanimously. Moving on to item 5E, adopt resolution 2022 R45, authorized execution of change order number four with TV, with TB landmark for the Black Forest face through CDBG in 32 project amount of $208,921.82 for a total contract amount of $2,000,736,534.91 cents. Good question, Commissioner.
Do you have any photos of what work, uh, work is being done over there at the scope of that work at all?
I can certainly get some photos and send them to the commission.
Reason why I'm asking is, this is another change order. We did a change order earlier on the same project. And then I also see where, uh, in item I, it mentioned a change for alternate A area. Are these two related?
They are related when this project was bid, there was the base bid area and the alternate A area. So they were awarded separately.
Here's my question, why I have some issues with it. Change order, this is like a $1,997, $2 million project that have doubled with change order.
Yes.
A million dollars in change order.
So I can, can I speak to the one that's in front of you right now? Okay, so the first one, which is item F, correct?
Item E.
Item E, sorry, item E. This represents field changes and price increases. Field changes are when they encounter utility conflicts or other kinds of conflicts in the field. These things aren't known ahead of time, they're unexpected. It also includes a four-inch water main that had to be put in at the public yard for the irrigation at the ball fields. We saved a little bit there, combining it with the larger project. There was also additional repairs and manhole repairs required on 13th Street. So it's a combination of price increases, conflicts in the field, the additional work on 13th, and the additional work at the public yard.
Well, I also see, I saw that, and it says supplies quadrupled.
Yeah, the cost of supplies has increased.
So quadrupled?
Yes.
Yeah, and that, that time probably went back out here, I mean.
It's the, it's the, it's not. It's the it's the it's not the cost that the contractor is charging us, it's the supplies, it's the materials, material costs.
So that wasn't noticed in just a month ago. That's when the other change order was in, I'm sorry, February, wasn't it? I know.
That was a different project.
September.
September, thank you.
September ninth twenty.
We had three, this is the third change order.
This is the fourth change order.
Number four.
It's number four.
Uh uh you know, just for the commission, just for note, you know, reading this and seeing the amount of change orders in. The amount that it made this project turn out to be a million more dollars than we 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 approved. You know, is this always necessary?
I wouldn't bring it to you if it wasn't necessary.
What I'm saying, okay, so I guess I should have said it this way. So when we put RFP out there, we should, the numbers, some sometimes it make me feel like when I'm up here and I look at these things. That I'm not saying you guys, but I am saying that we should err on the side of caution when we when we have these bids out there. And a million dollars more, I have an issue just saying okay with it and then seeing three and four different change orders. Uh matter of fact, one of the projects uh that I noted uh. Had to change some sidewalks and redo sidewalks and I went out and looked at the project myself and that was on Oak Street. Um where when they're doing the pipes, they laying out water pump, water pipe. And it was a huge oak tree in the way. People on the construction site and they go, well, we had, we got to this point and we had to go around that oak tree. Now, in the planning stages, you had to see that big oak tree, almost big as my car. So how did that end up being a change order when you should have saw that, you know?
I would be very willing to sit down with you and the plans and look specifically at that right now, I can only give you a good guess, an educated guess. Is that they didn't originally intend probably for the water lines to have to be in the sidewalk and be conflicted with that oak tree. But there may have been a reason they had to shift to that sidewalk area.
Just a heads up that I will be looking for that kind of stuff and I just want, I I accept that answer. But uh for future, I think we all need to do our due diligence looking for that. And and I'm I'm in a learning process, but I do see some of this stuff and well, being dollars change order, that was, that got around my attention very quickly.
Commissioner, I'm sorry, I was out last week, um was off for a week while this item was being prepared, so I really wasn't up to speed, I wanted to go get. Uh the summary of all the change orders before speaking to this. The alternate A area, some of these change orders, the initial one and the second one totaling almost five hundred and twenty. Or five hundred and thirty thousand dollars was actually adding scope in that you removed or you didn't originally award. You added St. John's Avenue and some additional Reed Street uh work in associated with the project. Sorry, I'm breathing heavily, I had to run at the copier real quick. Um this one is for thirteenth street and field changes, so this two hundred and eight thousand dollars isn't just for additional unforeseen. You guys actually authorized staff to go back and resurface with the contractor, the entirety of thirteenth street. And one block runs on car, helping out here. Car, Diana and Oak, um so that was added to the project at your request in a previous meeting.
Wait, that two hundred and eight dollar uh two hundred and eight thou- thousand dollar change order?
Yes, sir, you you may, you may recall, we came to you and you said, hey, we're gonna be ripping up a portion of the road and resurfacing an adjacent area. And it was an opportune time to go ahead and use some of the additional funding to resurface thirteenth street while we were there. And at the time, the commission authorized staff to go back to TB landmark in the form of a change order and that's what this is in addition to some of the. Unforeseen issues that Mandy was explaining earlier.
So you understand where I came from with that first que- that last question about the tree being there, and we need to. Be on top of that, I won't say, alright, so that was that.
Any other questions pertaining to this item? Not entertaining motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion on the floor and a second, any further discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye. Motion carries unanimously, moving on to item F. Drop resolution twenty twenty-two R twenty-six, accepting proposal portrayed in a current fleet of golf carts and lease purchase of the new fleet in twenty twenty-three. Easy Go cart, golf carts and authorized execution of all documents associated with the fifty-four month lease agreement to effectuate. The transaction, Mr. Harts.
Second.
There's a motion by Commissioner Campbell, a second by Commissioner McCaskill, before we get into the discussion, Mr. Harts.
Uh good evening, um Andy Harts, one forty-five, Brittany Lane, Palm Coast Florida. The golf carts at the golf course, we, the good thing is we've been really, really busy, um we've uh golf carts are like any other. Car or anything else, they only have so many rounds in them, we've pretty much worn the ones out that we've had. This year, we've been extremely busy with St. John's County Course being closed, we've got a lot of extra business uh. Should be to the tune of a couple hundred thousand more in revenue this year with the city share will be well over a hundred thousand at the end of this year where it was. Sixty something last year, so business is good, but with business being good, we've also, you know, gone through some wear and tear on the golf carts. At this point, Easy Go wants to help us out with the new golf carts, we're one of two courses left in Florida that have lead acid batteries. Uh the new carts are all lithium, so getting service on lead acid batteries is gonna become more difficult. And Easy Go has kind of helped us out with the transition from moving into the new carts with a pretty good deal and. A lot of it is based on us just having lead acid batteries and them not wanting to service them anymore. So to take advantage of it, we're able to get out of our lease a little early and get into some new golf carts.
Any question for your permission?
Hey, I have a question, so what is our lease agreement right now, how much we pay a month for those carts we have, that are two thousand nineteen carts?
The carts that we have, the lease payment, um I don't have it in front of me, I think it's around fifty-five hundred.
So we pay fifty-five hundred a month right now?
I think more or less, yeah.
So, so the proposal, we'd be paying. Six to five hundred.
Yeah, it's it's more with the new carts and also more carts are going from sixty to fifty, from fifty-four to sixty cars.
And then we're, so you say we stand a chance to make a hundred thousand city share.
Yeah, basically with the city share up to a certain part of revenue and then after that, the city gets twenty percent. And I pretty much hit the number for the year, so going into the next six months, pretty much the city gets twenty percent of green feed, car fees for the.
Which will be the best year ever.
This is, this is by far the best year ever, I mean.
What was the city share last year?
Sixty. Sixty something thousand, on top of the, you know, lease payment that I pay every month, that was just the revenue share at the end of the year.
Right.
I also pay the monthly payments.
So, we're gonna, at these carts, we're gonna pay seventy-eight thousand a year for these new carts.
Yep.
So that cut out of our share, right?
Well, I also pay the lease payment, I mean, that lease payment almost covers the cart, I pay out forty-five hundred a month in the lease payment. Which is a lot for, yeah.
Yeah, what's the cost of replacing the batteries of the carts that you have right now?
Well, a couple of years ago, it was about six hundred a cart, now it's about a thousand a golf cart, I did, I have six golf carts that I own, at least twelve other carts. And uh we just replaced the batteries and it was a thousand per cart to do the batteries.
So if you keep the carts, you're gonna have to replace the batteries?
If we keep the carts that we have now, yeah, all the batteries will need to be replaced or we'll have to reduce rounds too. Because we won't have carts, I mean, they're just not able to go around twice, the older they get, the the less distance you get out of the batteries.
And how, what's the age on the carts now, so?
Uh the carts now are two thousand nineteen.
So it's on three years.
Yep.
Getting close to.
But in the three years that we've had, especially last year and this year, we've done two years worth of rounds, I mean, they've they've gone around a lot more times.
And you're getting closer to the term.
Right. And I'll still continue to, you know, I I spend eighteen hundred bucks a month to rent carts, I, you know, own carts and the city still gets their twenty percent of those carts too.
Of what you own?
Yeah, oh yeah, any cart that goes around the city gets gets the twenty percent.
So if I'm only getting a thousand dollars for the cart uh that we're gonna. Trade in. First, I I need to go back to. It's a fifty-four, it's a fifty uh four month lease on the on on the carts we have now, so we terminate that lease early.
Correct, you're right, and that, and we've done that with the last two or three leases, they've been terminated after three or four years. And it rolls into the next lease.
So there's a possibility we're paying three hundred and fifty-one thousand dollars. Out of this second lease, if we go to term with that, with new carts.
Mm-hmm.
And we anticipate getting newer carts in two years or three years after that, I'm just asking.
Uh the newer carts after this.
Yeah, the ones we trying to order now.
Well, the new carts are a little different, uh with the lithium batteries, they they have a longer life, the battery is actually guaranteed for ten years. So you never have any battery issues, the second biggest problem that carts have are the brakes. It becomes a safety issue because the brakes now are mechanical brakes, new golf carts have magnetic brakes like cars, so they don't go bad, but the new carts. Will go the five year term because they won't have any battery issues, that's the biggest problem we fight as we get into batteries.
This money was budgeted for this reason?
It won't be till next year, the cart lease won't start until September or October, or actually October, November.
Coming out next fiscal year's budget, so which we're making right now. But also, Commissioner, as uh many of you may know. Uh Mr. Hertz's operation of the golf course has been a. An extremely unequivocal success for the city, where we've gone from losing. I don't know, somewhere around three hundred thousand a year. Two seventy-five a year um to him paying us now. Um something in the neighborhood of a hundred to a hundred and twenty a year. Uh actually, what he didn't say was, when we drafted that lease, which we did here in the commission meeting. The the number that was set was one that I don't think anyone thought we'd ever hit as far as him paying the twenty percent. Uh because we had been through, if you remember, we'd been through the city trying to operate the course. We hired the great Bobby Weed, shouldn't say it that way, but Bobby Weed to come in and set things straight. Everything we had tried, it ended up costing us money and now uh what's happened is the course is in fantastic shape, he's got more play. And I guess ever.
Yeah, more play, more employees, so.
And um and, you know, so what he's done is he's worn out his carts because of his success, so we can, you know. He's got there for for a lot of reasons from business perspective, it makes sense to go ahead and keep him in, put him in new carts. The batteries will last for a longer period of time and what you didn't mention was, uh right now, you're getting one or two rounds out of a car before you get to charge. How much?
Uh we're lucky to get two, most of them will do one, some will do two.
And under the lithiums?
Five rounds.
Five rounds.
For ten years guaranteed, never.
It's it's just a, from an economic business perspective, it was, in my opinion, it's a sound decision.
And business continuity.
We own the number, and it's now the number nineteen public course in the country.
Yeah.
Any other questions as it pertains to this?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion is already on the floor.
Question.
There was a motion already on the floor.
Question.
We just opened the floor right quick. Welcome for public hearing, is there anyone here for public hearing? Seeing no one, we'll close public hearing, question's been called, all in favor, say aye. Motion carries unanimously, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next up. Item I, adopt resolution twenty twenty-two R forty-nine, authorize execution of no cost change order. Number one with TB landmark for CDBG in thirty-two alternate A area, Ms. Krantz.
Resolution number twenty twenty-two R forty-nine, resolution of the city, authorizing execution of a no cost change order, number one with TB landmarks for the Blackhead Space View. Project providing your service.
So move, second.
Any questions that pertain to this item before I open the floor for public hearing? There are no questions. Public hearing, is there anyone here for public hearing? Seeing no one. Hearing, any further discussion on this item, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Proposed unanimously, moving on, adopt resolution twenty twenty-two R fifty-nine, special event permit, Blue Crab Festival, City of Placa. May twenty-seventh through twenty-ninth.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, resolution number twenty twenty-two R fifty-nine, resolution of the city, authorizing a special events permit to the city of Portland, the twenty twenty-two Blue Crab Festival. Setting the conditions of the permit, allowing for the closure of certain streets to back color traffic during festival events, allowing for sales and consumption designated.
So move, second.
There's a motion on the floor and a second. The question as it pertains to, the question as it pertains, we want to just give an update first of all to the Blue Crab Festival, so we've had an opportunity to interview. Promoters as it relates to this item, um the decision. Um one of the biggest questions that we had to face was, would we be able to pull the Blue Crab Festival off within such a short period of time? Uh we've actually, we're actually looking at putting together a, an RFP. Um to address the issue as it pertains to um, as it pertains to securing. Uh a promoter for this particular festival, we've had a uh a number of individuals who are interested as related throughout the process. Um and so we're going to um bring forth an RFP so that we can deal with all the financial considerations necessary. Um as it pertains to our procurement policy on this matter. As you know, um we budgeted, we made a budget amendment of seventy-five thousand dollars to deal specifically with that issue. That's gonna be addressed in item T, uh as relates to the budget transfer. Um and additionally, we have twenty-five thousand dollars that came from TDC. I will also be going to the county to see if the county is wishing to put any money up, we additionally have a. Uh a major sponsor who's come on board and made a significant um commitment to Blue Crab with Beck Automotive. Um and we are seeking additional sponsorships as we continue on, uh the RFP um should be out. Um we will need to take it and and we will probably take that as an emergency item tonight so that we can address that. Um to get authorization to put it out on the streets, that will allow us to move forward what we have, but I wanted to give you that update so that. All the information was there, are there any questions from the commission at this point?
Mr. Mayor, could I just make one one mention, uh just uh, I think the press is here and. I believe the commission understands, this uh, our efforts to try to. Make the Blue Crab Festival happen is not the result of us wanting to take the Blue Crab Festival from any entity. We basically are stepping into a gap when the entity that held it last determined that they were not in a position to move forward. And in the interest of of uh making this event happen, understanding that so many events have been canceled. And so many people have been concerned about the fact that uh events have been canceled, festivals have been canceled. Um the the city uh indicated that we would look at trying to make make the event occur, make the event happen. Um and and that's what we're trying to go forward to do, but there's some talk and we read some things about how the city took it from. The group that sponsored it in in the last, on the last occasion, I guess it's just an example of how people want to find something negative out of something positive. Or no good deed goes unpunished, you take, take your choice, but I just wanted to clarify, we did not go out and seek the opportunity to help host this event. Instead, what we've attempted to do is salvage an event that otherwise would not have happened and it's one that people in Pudneep County seem to. Have increasingly looked forward to and want to see occur and so we're doing our best to make it happen. With your your support and assuming you move forward with the the R, the permission for the RFP and then a lot of hard work by a lot of our people. Who otherwise would have been enjoying Memorial Day weekend on vacation or on their off time. But sorry, forgive me for that, but I just, I guess I read one too many Facebook posts.
So we're hoping for a public hearing, Ms. Ms. Kitchens has a card in as it relates to this item and the next.
Only we kitchens ten twenty-seven South Quilt Suite, Palaca, Florida. At the last meeting, the Palaca young professionals told the city they were canceling the Blue Crab Festival this year. The city voted as an emergency item, therefore not advertised to the public, to put on the Blue Crab Festival and take seventy-five thousand dollars of the citizens' taxpayer money out of the general fund reserves to pay for it. In addition to that, the city, which doesn't have the staff to put on the festival, is taking more tax money to hire an events coordinator. You've just sent out the RFP, you said. Unless the city plans to use unpaid labor, more tax money will go to paying their police, firefighters, garbage collectors, and street workers overtime to work the three days of the Blue Crab, as well as pay the permit fees by extra property and liability insur- liquor liability insurance and buy a temporary liquor license to be able to sell alcohol at the festival. If the city doesn't pay themselves the fees and costs others are required to pay to put on a festival, that would be discriminatory. Hiring an event coordinator who will be employed by the city does not answer the question of how the city can act both as an event sponsor and the governing body that grants the permits and suspends the city ordinances. According to the event's schedule, the festival will start May the twenty-seventh, twenty-eighth, and twenty-ninth at eight AM. May the twenty-ninth is Sunday. Starting the amplified sound will disturb the Sunday morning church services at the downtown churches, including First Presbyterian, Saint Monica's, Liberty Baptist, Saint Mark's, Saint James, First Baptist, Saint Mary's, and Bethel AME. The amplified noise should not be allowed to start before twelve noon on Sunday, May the twenty-ninth. As to the fireworks, I request you do not have fireworks because every time the city has a fireworks display, the law-breaking element in all Palaca neighborhoods illegally shoot off fireworks for hours, resulting not only in hundreds of calls for service to the police, but also in illegal fireworks being shot directly at police and citizens. Given the two fights that broke out at the East Palaca County Fair this week, or this past weekend, I would think it's in very bad advice for the city to hold the Blue Crab Festival. However, knowing that you will go ahead with the city-sponsored Blue Crab Festival, I have two requests. One, don't have the fireworks display, and two, don't let the amplified sound start prior to twelve noon on Sunday, May the twenty-ninth. I also have a third one that I didn't write down. Do not let that racket come all the way out across the railroad track so that I have to call the police three nights in a row from the boom boxes rattling my house. Thank you. And I'm not mad at you, I'm just very, very disappointed that you took over Blue Crab. Do you have any questions?
Yeah, we don't. No, we don't, but I'll, I'll talk to you about the clarifications of the misinformation you got in your console. I'll talk to you and clarify some of that stuff up so you have a better understanding.
Please do, I've already talked to the community people that were there and they told me about it, thank you.
All right, we'll, 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 we'll get you right. I will. Is there anybody else here for public comment? It's always a pleasure. Close public hearing on this matter. So, any comments from the commission? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, oppose. Motion carries unanimously. Moving on, item T, adopt resolution twenty-two R sixty, authorizing a budget transfer for the Blue Crab event. We've already gone through that. At this time, I'll entertain a motion. So moving to caption, just after the motion.
Resolution twenty-two R sixty, resolution of the city, authorizing a budget transfer from general fund reserves for the Blue Crab Festival and preventing government reserves.
Second.
There's motion on the floor in a second. This kitchen, do you want to address this item or was it addressed consummatively? Okay, is there any other, is there anyone else here who's here for public hearing at this time? Seeing no one, public hearing is closed, or any further discussion on this motion?
Mr. Mayor, do you want to address, uh, our hope and belief that we'll be recovering a large majority of those funds?
Uh, I wasn't going to, but I will. Um, so based on the budget that we have in place and the items that were presented before, um, the commission from the presenters of, the presenters who applied for the opportunity to work as the promoters of the festival, um, and working generously off of the budget from conservatively, uh, we estimate that at a minimum, the recovery to the city, in addition to the seventy-five thousand that will be put up, um, if there were no other sponsors in place as of today, would be at least forty thousand dollars. Uh, we believe that that number could exceed six figures if all the stars align up and this festival could become a moneymaker for the citizens of Palaca as opposed to the loser that speculated based upon what's in place, and those are just conservative numbers at this time, which include a forty percent increase in cost based upon the past festivals of the last from twenty nineteen. So, that, therefore, uh, that's where we are projection-wise as, as to the festival. So, any additional comments, questions, or concerns? I entertain a motion from the commission at this time.
Motion to approve.
Second, approve by Commissioner Bourne, a second by Commissioner Jones, any further discussion on this motion? Questions, call all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, motion carries unanimously, Commissioner Campbell as well. Now we move on to our regular business. Item six on the agenda discussion, and actually, before we get to that, we take one item as an emergency item. Um, we want to take the RFP as an emergency item, um, for the services of the promoter for the Blue Crab Festival. Um, time is of the essence, we only have sixty days to get this out, um, and to get it back in, uh, in a timely manner so that we can proceed with the planning of the festival. And so I entertain a motion to accept that item as emergency.
I make a motion to accept it as a emergency item.
There's a motion by Commissioner Jones, there's a second by Commissioner McCaskill, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, motion carries unanimously. Uh, Ms., Ms. Sh.
You want an update on the RFP?
Well, what we need, I'll, I'll do the simplified version of it. What we need at this point is an RF, we'll need permission from the commission so that we can put an RFP on the street. Uh, I'm asking for a motion so that this commission will authorize staff to put an RFP on the street for promoter services and also, uh, for promoter services, which include the ability, um, to pay for vendor services as well. Uh, and so those are the two things that we'll include in the RFP. Vendor services and promoter services, um, that pertain to, uh, the facilitation of the Blue Crab Festival.
Is that, is that included, included in the seventy-five thousand?
It is, it is included. There is no additional, that was included as a part of the budget, that was part of that misinformation piece that we're going to clear up.
Got you.
So is there a motion in this?
I'm, uh, so move.
Second.
There's a motion on the floor in a second. Is there any further discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much. Moving on to item six of the agenda discussion in direction of St. John's Avenue traffic signals, third, fourth, sixth, seventh, and eleventh street.
Uh, yes, commissioners, as you are aware, we have three signals that were sparked by lightning on St. John's Avenue, uh, and are no longer operational. Um, when that happened, uh, we did solicit quotes, we filed a claim. It was brought to our attention that they no longer met the current DOT specifications and at that time would have to be upgraded, uh, at a significant cost, approximately forty thousand dollars. Um, DOT offered, uh, some rural, um, planning assistance. Uh, they basically came out and did what's called, uh, signal warrant analysis using the manual uniform traffic control design. And they concluded that the signals were not warranted based upon the traffic counts on St. John's Avenue in the downtown corridor, with the exception of Ninth Street, which is State Road twenty. Uh, so before you is a proposal to go ahead and have those signals removed and replaced with four-way stops when the downtown street skate project commences.
I would like to have some input from the local law enforcement to see, have it impacted any accidents or traffic accident or crashes uh, during this time of removal. I understand by the survey, but some actual things, uh, were.
As it relates to the change in the traffic lights and the stop signs, we haven't had an increase at all with, with traffic crashes or any interruptions. In fact, the, uh, traffic flow for the St. John's area we're referring to is going a lot smoother.
Any other questions or concerns from the commission or?
I just have, I just have one question just for clarification sake. Um, Jonathan, is the thirty-eight thousand dollars, is that for all of those that were mentioned or is it per intersection?
That's for all of them, uh, Commissioner, uh, but just this afternoon, I was advised by Mr. Bridges, uh, who is in charge of coordinating signal maintenance and Fourth Street is down as well, uh, so that cost would go up if you wanted to restore those signals.
So I guess a follow-up question would be, being that Fourth Street is out, um, what does it look like if we make, however, whatever the decision is tonight and the other lights? Are there any other lights outside of going that direction, going towards Eleventh Street that will possibly be affected?
Um, no, sir, most of the other lights are actually DOT lights. And as you're aware, we have an annual maintenance contract with DOT and they supply us with materials as well. I would like to note that this would, um, most likely result in a reduction in operational costs as, because we current, uh, currently pay Kent Brothers to do the, uh, annual signal maintenance on all one, two, three, four, five of these intersections.
And what's the approximate cost of that?
I don't have that on me, sir, I apologize.
I have another question. As far as risk management, things of that nature, do it help with our city having traffic signals in, in, in the area like that or not, uh, as far as risk management for ISO purpose?
I think a big factor there, uh, would be the fact that under the guidelines that, uh, that DOT prescribes those intersections that were referenced in the report that's attached to the agenda don't meet their standards for the necessity of a light. So I think that's a, a huge thing when you talk about liability. If you had a high-traffic area that exceeds the numbers the DOT sets as a threshold for the, the necessity of a light and you don't put a light, then at least it would leave the door open for someone to say that we were negligent by not having a light where DOT standards say you should. Or where DOT standards say you don't need a light, then I, I think that kind of takes that out of, out of the equation. If you're placed on notice, I'm just offering an opinion, but if you were placed on notice through some other means that there was a, 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 a great need for a light, i.e. increased number of accidents, um, something of that nature, then, then maybe again, you'd have a liability question. But everything that I'm being told is that we're not having, we're not seeing that issue.
Okay, so that, that was one of my concerns and I'm glad you didn't address that, so.
Well, I could tell you personally, I, I ran right through the light before, not, not because I thought it was on. I thought, I thought the light was off and it was flashing, so, and it's, it's kind of confusing because you have stop sign, you know, going at the same time. So, um, personally, I think the cost of putting them up there, you know, from the old school, rather have them, not need them, than need them and not have them. And thirty thousand, forty thousand dollars is not a lot to, to have them up there. Um, and some people are accustomed to going through downtown with traffic light. Um, again, that's just my piece on that, it doesn't matter.
You read your rights.
You don't have a camera up there. So.
You don't stop running lights.
So attorney, uh, you know, to get us out of litigation, so attorney, what's your opinion on it?
I think with the DOT study, Commissioner, that they don't, we don't need a light traffic light there, and I don't see the increased liability. And with the, um, information that we received from Chief Shaw, that there's not increased crashes, and we're not on notice that there's going, there is a problem that exists.
Well, when we have festivals and other parades downtown, do that take away or that take away from law enforcement manpower to have to be at those intersections? Uh, I mean, those things I just think of, so, if not, chief, chief already said no, so I'm okay with that.
Okay.
But those are the things that came to my mind.
But even if you have festivals and parades and things like that, the police officers would be there regardless of whether we had traffic lights in order to do, um, traffic control.
And then the other pieces on the, on the St. John's Avenue redesign, we actually had the ballards going up on those corners so that we can reduce the amount of officers needed, so you actually have, uh, we can have removable traffic control devices that are put in to keep the traffic flow from there, so we have more officers, um, in the various areas. Any other questions as it relates to this issue? Uh, not, I entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We, but I think there was a.
Well.
We need direction. It's a, it's a discussion and direction item.
Okay, okay, it's a discussion and direction, so we're just, I just make a, um, suggestion or, uh, direction to give staff to go ahead to remove those, uh, lights, third, fourth, sixth, seventh, and eleven.
So there's a, there's a, there's a motion on the floor to accept the DOT recommendation as it relates to the lights, to remove the lights at the stated corners. Is there a second?
There is a second.
Before this, before we go into discussion on the motion, I'll open the floor up for public comment.
Might I say that DOT does not know what local citizens need, they're the ones that set the traffic lights on Reed Street at seventeen seconds. So when you cross Reed Street from the side street, you basically have to run across the street and by the time, before you get to the curb on the other side, the red lights changed. DOT also said they wanted all the traffic speed on Reed Street to be fifty-five miles an hour because they wanted to rush the traffic through Palaca. DOT does not know what the individual citizens need. I am, I do not go downtown on the streets where there are no red lights, and now I have to go out of my way to go around to get to where I'm going. However, I know that it's a lost cause to try to get the red light on Third and Seventh Street back. However, I might point out to you that the red light on Fourth Street, Fourth Street goes to the county courthouse and the property praiser and the tax assessor, pardon me, property praiser and the tax collector are also on that corner. I think it's very vital to having a, a red light there when you have a high volume of traffic. On Sixth Street, that street goes down to Ameris Bank, it also goes to the Putnam County Public Works, the Putnam County Recording Office, and you can go to the courthouse of Attorney to the right, and it passes the Hedstrom Law Office. I think it's very important to keep the light on Sixth Street. Eleventh Street, you should know, that's the post office, the fire department, the police department. Removing the light on Eleventh Street is horrible. I don't care what FDOT says, they're not on the street, they're not walking, they're not driving. As a citizen of Palaca, a driving citizen of Palaca who's going downtown and doing business, I don't want to have to sit at that stupid stop sign for fifteen or twenty minutes and wait for traffic to go by like a lot of citizens are having to do and one just told me in the audience just now that that's happening. I don't go to where the stop signs are, I go to where the red lights are and I go that way. But please, leave the lights on Fourth, Seventh, I mean, Fourth, Sixth, and Eleventh. And as far as revenue goes, since you're going to make some money off of Blue Crab, take some of that money for the end and fix the red light, okay? Thank you.
Anybody else here for public comment? This is scary. I, I, I agree with her on Eleventh Street. Uh, I think she's absolutely right on Eleventh Street. I don't know about the Blue Crab part, but I'm okay with Eleventh Street. And so I definitely think Eleventh Street should stay. Um, any other comments for the commission?
Well, I guess we'll just keep Eleventh Street, um, it is high-traffic in that area, thank you for bringing that, um, with all the, uh, post office. Please partner right there, so yes.
Commissioners, I would suggest that a four-way stop in a downtown setting is more efficient flow of pedestrian and vehicular traffic. Uh, simply, you will pull up to a four-way stop and all you have to do is wait for the vehicle in front of you, which has the right of way to get through the intersection, rather than waiting for a signal to cycle all the way through.
So we got a motion on the floor, the original motion is to remove all the sections.
I, I withdraw. I like, uh, we draw mostly. Traffic lights.
Hold me a second. You're, you're okay with a withdrawal?
I am okay with a withdrawal.
Okay, is there a new motion?
What's wrong with this motion to remove the, the four lights? And then what about the consideration for the four-way traffic? The, uh, four-way stop signs that, uh, Jonathan just mentioned.
That's what he's thinking about doing anyway.
That would take the place of the lights.
Okay.
So would you be, you'd be eliminate, well, there, there's no motion, so I'll wait.
So, motion to, um, move with staff recommendation of giving direction for staff to remove Third, Fourth, Sixth, and Seventh Street lights Eleventh Street, and then that's moving forward, the four-way stop signs.
How about Fifth?
No, fifth is not listed.
Fifth is not listed.
Six and seven is five lights. Mostly four, eleven. Mostly four, eleven.
Motion on the floor is a second.
Second.
Is there any further discussion on the motion? All in favor, say aye. Oppose, motion, motion carries four to one. All right, move on. Discussion and discussion and direction city on vehicle property.
Mayor, I want to move this back to the next uh scheduled meeting. I asked finance for some information. They were unable to give it back to me uh before this meeting. So when they do, I would like to bring it forward and present to the entire commission.
What was that?
About discuss the vehicle policy.
Yeah, is there motion at table to the?
Table it, table to the next meeting.
So the motion, motion at table this item to the next meeting. Um, will that be enough time to get the requested items for the use?
Yeah, I I spoke with the the chief of police over summer yesterday and uh he advised he'd be able to get to it by next week, so.
Mr. Shane, will you be able to get the remaining items on for the vehicle policy by the next meeting?
The changes to the vehicle policy?
No, just some questions of I, Commissioner Jones said he has some additional questions. So the motion, there's a motion at table to the first meeting in April. Is there a second?
Second.
Second on the floor, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, motion carries unanimously. Uh, it's table. Want to take this time out to recognize the immediate past chair of the Volusia County Minority Elected Officials. Um, Ms. Ida Wright, who's also the former chair of the Volusia County School Board. Raise your hand so we can recognize you. And also the men of Omega Psi Phi Fraternity Incorporated, will you please stand for us at this time? Next up is public hearing, uh ordinance twenty-two zero one.
Thank you, Mayor Hill. Ordinance twenty-two zero one, request to amend official zoning map of the city of Palaca, Florida from City of Palaca Planned Industrial Development. Kid, the city of Palaca Light Industrial M1 for the following properties, seventy-two twenty PRC Way, Palaca, Florida, three-two-one-seven-seven. Parcel zero-four-ten-twenty-six-four-zero-zero-zero-ten-zero-zero-one-zero. Part of the southwest quarter of the southeast quarter of section four plus part of the northwest quarter of the northeast quarter of section nine described as in lot one. In official records book eight thirty-two, page twelve-twenty-seven, parcel zero-nine-ten-twenty-six-four-zero-zero-zero-one-zero-zero-zero-two-one. Uh, the west half of the northeast quarter of the northeast quarter lying north of St. John's Avenue Extension in official record ten forty-nine, page fifteen-eighty-one. A portion of parcel zero-four-ten-twenty-six-four-zero-zero-two-one-four-zeros and a portion of parcel zero-nine-ten-twenty-six-four-zero-zero-three-zero-four-zeros. A total of twenty-six point seventy-six acres, more or less, providing for severability, providing for scrivener's errors, and providing for an effective date.
There's motion on the floor, is there a second? There's motion for a second. This is second reason for adoption. Not before for public hearings. Anyone here for public hearing? Seeing no one, we'll close the public hearing. Is there any further discussion on the motion? All in favor, say aye. Oppose, motion carries unanimously. Moving on to PB case twenty-two, that's zero seven.
Thank you, Mayor Hill. Ordinance twenty-two oh two, an ordinance of the city of Palaca, Florida annexing into the corporate limits of the city of Palaca, Florida, certain adjacent territory identified as twenty-five twenty-nine Hudson Avenue, Palaca, Florida, three-two-one-seven-seven. Part of the southwest quarter of the southeast quarter of official records book three thirty-four, page five fifty-three, contiguous to the boundaries of the city of Palaca, Florida, providing for scrivener's errors and providing for an effective date.
So, so, so. I know y'all waiting on that. There's a motion on the floor. Is there a motion on the floor? There's a motion on the floor by Commissioner Cass. Is there a second?
Second.
There's a second on the floor by Commissioner Borm. Open the floor for public hearing at this time. Is it, is annexation ordinance only? So is anyone here for public hearing? Seeing no one, we'll close the public hearing. Is there any further discussion?
Look across great street on this.
This is actually a center lot.
Where is it? Between what two streets? Between what two streets?
The applicant submitted this. The applicant submitted this because they need water and sewer. Their septic tank failed. And that's what they're requesting. There's a street to the north as Belmont Drive.
Royal Hills.
That must be. See what I'm talking about?
Maybe no use the closest.
Correct.
It's right in the middle of um.
So we gonna have city water in the middle of the county.
Now, that whole street at that end is a fingerling. And so you end up with, you end up from street to street, literally. You can go from any house and you may be in the city, you may be in the county because they can be contiguous across the street.
Right.
Yeah, so.
Royal Hills is unique because that subdivision had the utilities put, it had the water and sewer put in the backside of the property and the front side still remained in the county. While the backside was annexed many years ago. And that's one of the problems that you have with that particular area.
So we're reducing the size of an enclave as part of this application.
So Hudson Avenue has been actually reduced.
So we won't be responsible for the street at all.
Hudson's a county maintenance tree.
We'll be responsible, I mean, if it's annexed, we'll be responsible for.
Yeah, we we would cover, we would cover the garbage collection. Once it's annexed. But we already covered the rest on the other side of the property.
Say it again, man?
We, we already, so once it, once it's annexed, it it, the garbage collection comes from the city. And on the other side of the street. So when you look at Hudson, when you get to the end of Hudson, the left side of Hudson, if you're going towards Oleander, the left side of Hudson is already mostly, those are mostly county properties. There are a few properties in between. There are city properties. On the right side, once you get about halfway down the street, it's all city property. And then there are a few properties that have annexed being that are contiguous um before you get to Belmont that end up in the same direction. As you go further back towards Silver Lake, then you're starting to see more properties annexed as their stepings start to fail. And so literally the answer is you look at the garbage can and time to figure out where they are. And that's one, that's one of the issues that we're going to address with the county as it relates to enclaves. Because you end up with duplication of services on those streets and you can end up with two agencies showing up um for fire. You can end up with two agencies showing up for police and I got officers in the back of the room nodding their head.
Uh, I just saw in their last meeting, they were talking about going from uh.
Septic sewer.
Septic sewer. So this sort of same thing we're doing, right?
But so the.
At the, at the homeowner's request or the property owner.
So the problem is the the easy, the easy fixes is mandatory annexation. But that would also create a nightmare as it relates to public perception and response. So what, one of the conversations that we want to have is do we create urban service districts? So that we provide the services in those areas where the enclaves are. So when you got a place like Melan Manor Apartments and the city always responds earlier to the apartments that the service for fire and police is already in the area where you've got the concentrated areas of city property. And the same thing in Royal Hills. Yeah, the same thing. So it, but most of the calls handled in Melan Manor are done by the city. And so those are some of those areas. We got six major places where that happens. And so this is another example of of where we're trying to fix these things so that the services all match up.
If you can ask other past meeting about the numbers of annexations that were requested that involved water and sewer connections. Last year, there were twelve applications for annexations. Nine of those are are agreements and the remainder are for, I'm sorry. Nine of those were for water and sewer.
I got a important question while we up here. So as citizens come in and get annexed in for water and sewer only.
You don't get annexed in for water and sewer only. I mean, that may be the purpose of them coming in, but they become, but all the services come in with it.
Right.
We we get their taxes, okay.
Yeah, so the taxes come in, all the services, you don't just get it, you don't just come in because once you get the services, you sign a pre-annexation agreement.
They become city taxpayers and.
That's correct.
Correct, our constituents.
That's correct.
All right.
Okay, so any other questions from the commission at this time? And we have a motion. All in favor, say aye. Motion carries unanimously. Next up is the amendment, amendment of future land use map. Ordinance twenty-two dash zero three.
Thank you, Mr. Ray. Ordinance number twenty-two down two-three. And one is the city of Palaca, Florida, providing the future land use map of the Dr. Comprin's plan be amended with respect to the public work of landless and fifty acres in size for Putnam County Urban Reserve to the city of Palaca. Residential land density for the following property, twenty-five twenty-nine Hudson Avenue, Palaca, Florida, three-two-one-seven-seven. Part of the southwest quarter of the southeast quarter of official records book three thirty-four, page three, contiguous to the boundaries of city Palaca, Florida, providing for scrivener's errors and providing for an effective date.
Second.
There's a motion on the floor in a second. Not on the floor for public hearings. Is there anyone here for public hearing? Seeing no one, we'll close public hearings. Any further discussion?
Mayor Hill, if I may mention this is to.
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Motion carries unanimously. Resonating ordinance twenty-two twenty-two, twenty-two zero four, first reading.
Ordinance number twenty-two oh four, and one is the city of Palaca, Florida, providing that the officials owning up the city park to be amended for Putnam County Agriculture, the city park of residential one for the following property, twenty-five twenty-nine Hudson Avenue, Palaca, Florida, three-two-one-seven-seven. Part of the southwest quarter of the southeast quarter of official records book three thirty-four, page fifty-three, providing for severability, providing for scrivener's errors, providing for an effective date.
There's a motion on the floor. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion for a second, my Commissioner Jones. Not before for public hearings. Is there anyone here for public hearing? Seeing no one, we'll close public hearing. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. She carries unanimously. Next up, city manager and administrative reports.
Mayor, um the uh privileges fall upon me to report to you about an issue that you had inquired about a month or two ago, having to do with the entrance ways into the Price Martin Center. Um, you recall there was a question about what the cost would be or the possibilities of re-designing the Price Martin so that the parking lot at Price Martin so that the accessway or driveway that's basically directly, the northernmost accessway or driveway that's almost directly across from Main Street would be put back in the plan. We have a bid as of yesterday or a change of order estimate. I guess it's actually a quote as of yesterday that the cost of that would be two-hundred-and-fifty-nine-thousand-two-hundred-and-five dollars. A little bit of explanation, maybe. Um, we had asked some regarding uh the reason for that high cost. And what we were told was, and I'll be, I will be reading from this, excuse me, but that we would have to, they would have to move, remove pavers in order to properly tile in the existing subgrade, geo-textile fabric. I'm not going to profess to know and be able to explain to you all that that means. I have a guess, but I'm not going to advance it. Geo-grid aggregate base and brick pavers. Uh, the tie-in, the buffers based on approximately ten feet from the limits of the new work. In addition, there were some areas such as the parking stalls along the north edge, which have also been included in our removal and replacement quantities. This is because once the pavers and curb are removed on each side of this area, the pavers and base are likely to shift or rut when running heavy equipment across them. This is a worst-case scenario and we may be able to reduce the pavers removed if the city is willing to accept potential depressions or visual flaws. So what's I'm, what I'm getting from that in plain language is part of this is based upon the need to ref, to fix the base. And part of this is based upon anticipated damage that they'll think they'll do to the existing pavers when they're using heavy equipment, running the equipment across them to access the northernmost um access point. So if the northernmost driveway, so if they were to go back and design and give us a change order to put that northernmost accessway in, uh, the number would be about two-hundred-and-fifty-nine-thousand dollars, which they hope is the highest. If I could just briefly, because I had some questions about the, how we got here. Um, it's my understanding that uh the design that's in place was essentially the design that's in place that excluded the entrance way on the northernmost uh uh edge was basically the initial design, the original design of the project. Um, the thinking was that you didn't lose anything and you gained in a couple of different respects. One, you eliminate a potential four-way stop uh at Main Street, which is essentially present if you have an access and uh from and ingress and 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 aggress from that drop, from the parking lot at that northernmost location, which is directly adjacent to Main Street. And then you've got, of course, Eleventh Street going north and south. So I guess there was a safety issue there and I guess they describe it as a point of conflict that you're reducing in both walking and biking, reducing the potential for accidents. And then also they thought that vehicle entry would not be needed once the parking lot was improved and complete. But once the parking lot was completed, you'd have a more aesthetically pleasing access on the southernmost route. That would have a better approach to the building, showing more of the front of the building instead of from the side. And so I guess that those that, those people that do this for a living felt that that design on the southernmost part would be beneficial. In addition to that, I guess there's always been uncertainty about what we would put north of the parking lot. As you know, we own some area north of the parking lot and we have um an oral agreement at least to buy now the area that's immediately north of the parking lot uh along Main or Eleventh Street. So I guess that, and also then, of course, by lose, by by opening that accessway up, you'd lose at least four parking stalls. So I guess that from the perspective of efficiency and design and from those who do that for a living, they thought that having the accessway on the southern edge of the parking lot was was preferable. Uh, wasn't my decision, but that's what I've been given to understand as the explanation for why they went with a southern accessway instead of a northern accessway. So bottom line is, um, it would cost about somewhere in the neighborhood of a quarter of a million dollars to put the northern driveway in.
Comment, any comments, concerns? Or direction?
I'd say spend the two fifty-nine for just and entryway on this. It was something to do with, um, I guess the 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 ingress, ingress, ingress on safety issue. That was, I mean, that would be the only way I would want to move forward with uh that, that price. But if it doesn't have anything to do with life, health, and safety, um, I'll be fine.
Commissioner Jones.
I'm proponent for that interest to stay there, just like it is right now. We use it now. And have been any problems with being a four-way stop to get to the Price Martin Center. Uh, also that should have probably been thought of when made this. Uh, so I take, I guess I take that for standing up here and anytime that I uh approve that design if I did. But now we know that it isn't an entrance from the north. So if you're coming down Eleventh Street from North Eleven going to South Eleven, you can't turn in on the price. You're not going to be able to turn in on the price margin from that way, nor would you be able to come off of Main Street, which we mostly travel right now currently. When we talked about things that we're spending money on, three hundred and seventy thousand dollars on golf carts. Uh, change orders over a million dollars. And you say two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars is not, it's too much to consider a population of people that's trying to get to the same beautiful transportation hub that we're building. So I just wanted to know how that sound. And that's it. So you guys know where I stand on it.
Any other comments? Any other comments? All right.
No sir, not, not, no, I, I have nothing else to report.
Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead.
So was there any direction other than getting a quote on that, um, interest way?
No, no.
A quote, so we have one quote, that's all we're gonna go off of, what?
It's the existing contractor, so in order to get a different contractor involved in the project.
So we can't, the money for the rise grant, wouldn't pay for that?
The raise grant?
The raise grant?
Scope of that work is everything, as you know, from Sixth Street West, and that's a reconstruction and uh, water line on, 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 on area that's been a high concern to the commission. I don't know if there'd be money left over from that. And I guess I, well, I'll just leave it at that. You know, I, I don't under, we're talking about driving an additional hundred feet to make the turn in?
I'd rather use the, I, I, quite frankly, um, I think Commissioner Jones made a good point on last meeting. I, I'd rather try to use resources like that just to work on those paving projects you're talking about on Madison Street and some of the other areas, as opposed to using it um, on an entryway. And a hundred feet, it been, just really boils down to a convenience factor. I think that, I think that shifting those resources to, to the paving project would be a much better use of the resources.
Mayor, can I add something please?
Go ahead.
So the reference to the raise grant brings up an important uh, point, Commissioner Jones. This is a multi-phase project, this is just the first phase. And as Mr. Holmes referenced earlier, you know, you have a verbal agreement to buy the belt and building, and we've already acquired a couple of other parcels. The commission has yet to determine exactly what the in-use development of the rest of those parcels is going to be for the transportation hub. So this may be a better conversation when those plans become a little bit more concrete, um, which may line up with future funding cycles as well. Um, I did, um, we don't have it here, I did send it to Sonny, but I can provide it to you after the meeting. There's an illustrative plan for the entire two block corridor that will kind of give you an idea that there may be an opportunity in the future to reconsider additional points of ingress and egress. Once we better know what the development north of the Price Martin Center will look like, sir.
But also think that plan has to be updated based upon the changes that have been made since the initial drawings.
Well, I would like for those plans, when they, when they, they're updated plan just to be bought to the commission. So we'll see, I think I saw the one with the retention pond, one where it was taken out and then we now gonna pave it if I'm not mistaken.
No.
Or vice versa, one.
Well, the retention pond piece was actually supposed to have previous as well. And the issue with that was that there was, there were some issues that's related to the depth of the retention pond that was initially put in place. And so that was, that was a change order, a deductive change order that was initially on that project.
But any of those future plans for the, the area that we haven't touched, we'll come back before the commission, sir.
Can you also um, make some time to get with Commissioner Jones, so you can see if any of those concerns can be met early on in the process?
Of course.
As well as the rest of the commission. Okay, thank you. Anything else, Commissioner?
No, sir.
Anything else from the commission? Okay. Next up, she shall.
Good evening commissioners, I, I have provided you with the crime stat report for the first quarter. It includes the month of March through, January through March. I can touch on it quickly, or if you have any questions about it, I can answer those questions.
Can you go through it then?
Sure. Um, as you know, uh, through the month of March, early portion of March, late February, uh, we did have an increase in violent crimes. Uh, violent crimes uh, from that area is now up eleven percent. And uh, we have a de, a decrease in um, domestic violence at four percent for violent crime. Uh, we do believe looking at last year's number that uh, associated to um, the aggravated batteries, aggravated, aggravated assaults that we had within the last couple of weeks. That is what drove up that number, uh, minus those we would be having a decrease as well in violent crime. We are looking at, as you know, and we've been speaking on addressing those issues and concerns. As it uh, pertains to property crime, our property crime is down thirteen percent. Um, and it's showing uh, in some of the efforts that we have um, placed forward throughout uh, those different areas. One alarming area we do have though in property crime is retail theft, where currently, where retail theft is up uh, eighty, eighty-four percent.
That attributed to Walmart?
That is mostly attributed to Walmart. And we have put up something in place and we're gonna be revisiting Walmart again to see if, uh, is there uh, something that they're not doing that they were doing before that was helping us to affect a reduction? Or if it's just something that's seasonal that we're seeing that um, has been spotted that, that drove up the crime during that period. And then again, overall, looking at all crime overall, we are looking at a negative thirteen, thirteen percent.
That's your UCR number?
That's correct, uh, UCR numbers, as it compares to neighbors. And neighbors, when we look at and we talked about using all the crimes associated to one, we are up six percent from this time of last year, but on pace and looking at what we're doing. And I'll go into that a little bit further, we're looking at what we're doing, when we talked about neighbors same time this year, opposed to last year. Um, our neighbors' crime, our neighbors' numbers were in total. Excuse me, uh, up twelve percent. So we are seeing um, some benefit in different methods we're using to address our neighbors and, and being able to see them, know what they are and affect and address them as we move on through the year.
Any questions from the commission?
So aggravated assaults, obviously with the shoes that were, that had. Last year, number, that fifty. It was four last year, year to date, eight this year, so that's fifty percent.
Hundred percent.
Hundred percent increase, that's correct, it's a hundred percent right next to an increase.
Yeah.
So when you look at the assaults, so one of the questions I have is with the assault, you got a six hundred percent increase? How? So are these just a misdemeanor assaults?
So yes, the misdemeanor assault is basically just a threat, those are the simple threats, the, in neighbors, when you're associated with multiple crimes, as you know, in UCR, we take the highest crimes and neighbors, when you pull them all together. Uh, a neighbor's associated from last year was zero for assault, this year is six, so we're up at six hundred.
So does this deal with, so, so do the stats deal specifically with the arrest or does it deal with the call based on?
The, the stats deal with call-based services, they're not just simple arrests, no sir, there, there are calls for services all the way around.
And this includes the, the, the shooting incidents that we've had in the last few weeks?
That is correct, yes sir.
And, and so if I ask a question about the shooting incidents, um, from a. Without digging too far in the weeds, I understand that there's law enforcement strategies that may be employed. Has there been a strategy, um, cause we're, we're seeing those additional situations that have come up in the last week or so as well? And then I know this stuff is flowing off into areas of the county and also into the, as far as the fair and Ash Street and some of these other places we're starting to see. Um, has there been additional strategies employed to kind of deal um, with those shootings? And if so, is it anything that you can share?
There is some additional strategies, and I think we've seen some stuff through enforcement that has helped quiet some of the things down. The, the behind the scenes stuff is, to be honest with you, has been set up in meetings with different family members, um, in association to, one, not only get to the root of the problem, but address the problem. Uh, believe it or not, it's this simplistic uh, issue that caused major um, uh, fallout from it. Uh, but meeting with the families, um, also um, attempting to do mediations, um, talking to them, addressing them, um, putting things in place as far as our extra patrols and enforcement um, for those areas. Uh, what we found in uh, the Ash Street, uh, I think uh, Captain Williams can add a little bit more to the Ash Street stuff for our meetings with the, the county. But uh, I'm not sure if that actually was associated to any of our events, or was it an isolated incident?
You might want to check, cause Ash Street and Seventeenth Street is related, based on what we're here, so.
With the most recent one or the ones before it?
Uh, both of them, and also the fair, so you may want to check.
Yes, and my question is, when you're out talking to the families, are they more receptive, you know, she, you are going out there and.
Yes, and, and through our last incident that we had the other night, it shows that we were able to get not only one uh, subject in custody, but we're also able to get a rest warrant. We're seeing a lot more assistance and going out and meeting and speaking with them. We've seen it over, um, I believe our last three to four shootings that we got, we had the one on the south side that we were also able to very quickly uh, ascertain uh, arrest warrants and uh, get those subjects in the custody as well.
And so, um, and so we, I've seen some of the, um, I've seen and heard about a few of the, the things that were employed, so I've seen it, an increase in the sheriff's office, um, in the city areas. Is that, um, is that a part of your strategy?
Inviting anyone, we're not, we haven't invited necessarily, asked anyone to come in and assist. If you're asking if they were invited in as part of the strategy to help patrol, no sir, I think they initially came in uh, knowing what they seen was going on and knowing that it's just outside of jurisdiction as well and assisted. Um, I haven't had any single conversations with either county or FHP and any assistants uh, addressing their.
That was my next question, FHP also came in.
Yeah, that's correct, we haven't had any conversations, and we did notice the presence as well. And uh, present with, with what we have going on and the numbers we have, we welcome, but we hadn't had any conversations to request anybody to come.
So that wasn't a part of your strategy to bring FHP in?
No sir, we didn't have any strategy bringing FHP in to uh, address anything outside. Uh, now we do welcome all the assistance they have, cause it allows us to not only focus on other areas, but it addresses different things that we may have going in the city as it relates to any kind of traffic enforcement.
Now, is there an overall engagement strategy that would allow citizens, such as the individuals that are gathered here today, to be able to be engaged in the process or some communications that would better benefit or at least assist you? As it relates to um, creating a mechanism to deal with um, controls or at least assistance in, in dealing with violence? Uh, very similar to what we had before, if you remember.
We are, I have, uh, I do have something that uh, me and the city manager, um, we are looking at sitting down, putting some things together. That is one of the things um, on our, on my table to be able to address, and it's, it's simply being able to bridge the gap in the communication to help build relations. And uh, it's something that uh, we were looking at trying to get together and sit down and do before this meeting, but due to schedules and different things we had going on this week, we were unable to. But we are sit, communicating, planning and, and looking at bringing something forward to you very soon.
Do you remember uh, Palaka Police and Churches Against Violence?
Yes, sir.
That was there? Um, I, and I, I think that was a group that was very effective, particularly with the faith-based organization. I've had a conversation with Chaplain Mulberry about the opportunity to bring that back. The faith-based organizations have been meeting consistently, um, and if that's something that you're open to, um, I think we can coordinate that uh, as another mechanism to kind of put in place. Additionally, I've got um, many of my fraternity brothers in here for the Men of Omega Sci-Fi, um, Fraternity Incorporated. Commissioner Jones is also a member of the same fraternity. Um, but we have um, Project Manhood as well as some other initiatives that we use to engage youth, uh, particularly uh, young African-American males within the community as a whole. Um, so that we can provide mentorship and guidance in a different way. Special reporter, would you come up and maybe give us just a little overview of what Manhood does and if, what the opportunities are that exist, either you or, or Randy Johnson? And also we've got Quentin Beckton in the room, who's a law enforcement officer as well, and who sat on some forums with me as it relates to crime prevention, who may be available also.
Yeah, before you go into that, uh, I, I, you asked a question if I would be acceptable of them coming in or as far as recreating the pastors of. Board that we had going on pastors in Palaka. Um, as I said in my last uh, presentation to you, we're open to anything, we don't profess to have all the answers and we know we can't do it alone. So the ability for any entity or someone to come in and provide some assistance to us in resolving this problem, we have never shunned away or shied away to ignore any of that. We're open to sit down, listen and, and implement anything that we can do to help within the city.
Reporter, can you come forward?
Appreciate the opportunity to speak, I'm here on behalf of uh, my brothers, uh, Omega Sci-Fi Fraternity. Our four card of principles around manhood, scholarship, perseverance and uplift. Manhood is, is a very important component for us, and we welcome the opportunity to be a part of, of any solutions. We actually have a edict to be involved in four counties. And put them placard is a, a key part of, of what we want to be a part of. And so you've seen us, you've seen us at uh, various activities, uh, whether it's MLKD, uh, MLK Day, um, restorations of some of your parks, uh, voters' activities. We want to be a part, and so we welcome it. Uh, when we think about manhood, we think about ways in which we can actually mentor, all of us mentor. Uh, we've got law enforcement, we have educators, we have uh, uh, corporate, corporate individuals who are really about trying to make a difference. And uh, the brothers that we have here today came here tonight because we wanted to be, uh, hear what was going on, be a part of the solution. So we welcome it and look forward to maybe working with it.
And we'll also reach out to Beta Pi Chapter as well, uh, Dr. Michael Bowie, Manhood, from the Gangsta side as well, to make sure that we can uh, increase what we have in place.
And if I can piggyback off that, I've also reached out to Mr. Donald Boy, who is part of the Mad Desk Organization in Jacksonville. And he wants to get a, a group of team members to join forces with us to help address these issues that we're having here in our local city as well.
And one of the other things chief, I, I think is um, the need to um, for us to engage the public, I think from a, from a collective effort. Um, from the purposes of, from everything, from community, from community care, community prayer, um, to also um, putting forth some type of event where we can start to engage parents. Um, seems like I hit a light bulb just then.
Well, uh, it's like I told you, Mayor, we've been, we've been working on some things and uh, you mentioned it, and yes, I'm working on getting some things together. Um, but we've done it in the past, we've done it together. Um, but I'm trying to uh, get some, some assistance, and I think I got somebody on board to do something big. I'm just trying to get it done as I get through the weeds.
Well, the opportunity to do it together still exists. We worked collectively for ten years with PAL, um, and probably for twenty years within the community as a whole. I think the reality of it is this, um, I, I have an extreme issue with people from the outside. Coming into the city, um, articulating what the relationship between the city commission and the city police is without having um, any additional um, conversation coming from the city police department. As to what the position is when uh, I think there has been significant um, relationships that have been built for decades. In working towards making this community better. And so um, the working history has been there. Uh, the efforts in recent months to give raises, to provide you with the appropriate equipment to do all those things has been put in place. The spirit of collaboration and being able to provide citizen input and activities and to connect all the dots still exists. And yet, um, the characterizations that were put forth, um, they still exist. And so the question becomes, um, are we addressed those things as we move forward and try to, and try to make this community better? Because at the end of the days, silence isn't always golden. And that's what it really boils down to, is we start to move this community forward, because the community hears the rhetoric, just like everybody else does. But at some point, we have to let the community know what the city does. So, got anything else to add at this point?
Uh, did want to add that uh, we should be hearing from our annual crime stats, as you know. Uh, we submit annual process every year, we were um, selected along with uh, the whole county as to be a test pilot for neighbors. Um, we did run into some significant um, issues with submitting it through the system. But I am pleased to say, as I provided you throughout the year, neighbors along, alongside of UCR, um, no matter where it was, to give you an idea where we were with crime annually. Um, we will have a double-digit decrease in crime, and uh, we're just gonna wait and uh, listen and uh, see what the state sends us back as official numbers, and we look to present them to you when it comes in.
Do we have the um, the glitches that were previously there with markup, are those things taken care of?
The, the, looking at the ability, and I believe. The, the, looking at the ability, and I believe they're still attempting, I, I can't say that I can stand here and tell you that it's all fixed as it states. Um, or as it stands at this time, but, uh, the ability to, um, submit the numbers electronically for them to pull them from our system. It did not read with smart copy or for however it was set up for, for us in the county. Um, we tried multiple different ways. Um, as to, uh, as far as to move forward to get an extension to see if we can get those, uh, issues resolved. Um, I'm not a IT, so I can't tell you why they weren't reading or why it wasn't matching up. All I do know is that they, the, the final state came down and said that it would not work and for us to hand submit our numbers that we had, and that's what we did.
Another question from the commission. See, thank you. Scott Wright. He waved his report, didn't he?
Hey, follow that good report from Chief, so, um, I just want to elaborate on a couple of departments I have. In the Coach Arts, we have what they call Food Truck Friday or Lunch on the Riverfront is started last Friday, went pretty well. Uh, I encourage y'all to come out next Friday. It's going to be the first and third Friday of every month down on the riverfront. Uh, it's just a starter program right now, but we hope it to grow into something big. Uh, we had a lot of Facebook uh, conversation that, but it was positive this time. Uh, it was positive. So, uh, hopefully we'll see y'all after. We're just trying to initiate something to be down on the riverfront and give that beautiful, uh, GM city as everybody say something to do down there. Oh, and code enforcement, uh, I was directed to do a initiative project about the bike trail.
So we got code enforcement?
Uh, yeah, we, we've been having it for a while, you know, but, uh, you know, I don't know where that disconnect came in, but, uh, we have started that and, uh, we're working on some things. Uh, one of the young ladies that came in here, one of the houses was in that area. So we're working on that. Uh, we are definitely looking forward to help that we can get. So if you see a problem, please bring it to our attention. Right now, we still is complaint-driven. Uh, we're working on moving toward initiative, but we got a few things to work out, but it's doing well. Uh, we are hopefully that we get in that office here pretty soon and then we can add more to it. Um.
A good report, Rebuild Florida, but one of the houses that was a cold case. Yeah.
Oh, yeah, okay. We have a, DDO, uh, has decided to come in and take one of the houses that we had and had some issues. And they're going to tear down and rebuild it up to a new standard. So that always good. Uh, the young lady, the family persevered and they kept asking for help and it finally came.
Yeah, it was a house with a tree in it. Yeah. So that was, that's one of the, um, one, one of the houses that was, that had damage from Hurricane Matthew. And it, it was, uh, it was a situation where the family's been displaced for a number of years and Rebuild Florida is coming in to build a new house. And that's with the work of, um, Mr. Lawrence from Rebuild Florida, as well as Kerry Davis from Wealth Watchers and, um, Northeast Florida Community Action.
Yeah, so, so that's good. And then Recreation, uh, we still need coaches. We have soccer starting this Saturday at Forester. Uh, we have about a hundred, about a hundred team, a hundred kids. Uh, we need coaches in our age groups. So if you want to come out and help, you know, please come out. You don't have to be a scholar athlete. You just got to know how to tell kids to go straight and then come back. So, uh, those are the things that we got going on right now. Uh, I defer any questions to the commissioner or the city manager. Oh, I gotta add one more thing. We had a kickball championship this weekend and, uh, he wanted to say something. So we have a champion up there on the, on the dive.
But since you said it.
Yeah, the commissioner of Barnes team won the championship. So I think it was.
We have people on our team anywhere from 20 to 72.
He was on the bench.
When, uh, we were starting as a Cinderella team, the very first game, and, uh, so our team re-shaped and reformed and, uh, lost only one, well, we lost, we lost only one game. I claimed one long, but the rest of them, we swept, we swept the, the win itself.
I do want you all to know that, um, Commissioner Bourne at most games was in meetings, so he didn't contribute as if he said.
Yeah, but he kept with something. I think it's the communication.
Yeah, 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 he's.
Thank you, thank you.
All right, thanks a lot.
Appreciate you for having us on for the adults as well. We've got to focus on our kids and so we'll have everybody in.
All right.
Thank you, Ms. Curren, counselor.
Oh, yeah, on, uh, on the code enforcement, I think Ms. Thomas brought some information that we came back from the conference.
Yes, I got that, ma'am. Myself and Mr. Green got it and we're working on some of the ideas that she brought back to us.
There's some excellent ideas and now just we want to make, reach out to those guys in St. Peter and Marvall area because they have some excellent programs.
All right, counselor. Time's up, Ms. Cut right. Counselor.
No, sir. No, sir, I don't have anything.
Ms. Krantz.
I'm Mayor Hill. We will be having employee appreciation lunch citywide for city employees tomorrow. We had city halls. We want to invite all city employees to come out and participate. Um, Tuesday, I will be at Polacka High School giving a presentation on government to the City High School students and, and the accepted.
And that's a series of, um, presentations presented by city employees and I've got rate reviews on the first one.
Um, also, um, we recently appointed Brianna Pierce. I was going to recognize her. She was on the back of the audience.
Miss Pierce, where are you? She's outside. Oh, gee, she comes back in. Let's make sure we recognize her. For which ward?
We appointed her in the consent agenda to the stock preservation board.
Stock preservation. This, this thing. That's scary when we don't, you got your, uh, you got, you got your quarterly report coming up, your mid-year report coming up in a little.
Correct. That'll be at the next commission meeting.
Ms. Walsh.
Thank you. Some of that, some projects that we've been working on. Um, you had also asked about some numbers that, for new housing that we had, have been experiencing. In 2021, there were 24 new houses that were applied for building permits. Seven, and again, 17 annexations, 12 of them were, nine of them were water and sewer agreements. Uh, in 2022 so far, there's been one annexation which you had just heard tonight and eight new houses already this year. Um, and new businesses since October, 22 new businesses in the city.
Yeah, that's great news.
Right. Um, the cottages pro, um, project, we're, I'm right now reviewing this first round of comments from their plans that they've submitted. That's going very well. They expect to break ground probably by May, May or June. Morgan Apartments, I'm calling it the Morgan Apartments. That was the applicant at, uh, 6131 Krill and Davis Lake.
Davis Lake.
150 apartments. They are still in their R and D phase, but he called me today to ask some more questions. So he's moving forward. Um, Scooters Coffee up on State Road 19, we're reviewing their first round comments right now. Taco Bell is looking to refresh their site over on Cool Avenue. Wendy's here on Reed Street is also doing a similar project. They're both in review currently and you also know about the plants of rescue, which we heard tonight.
It's good news. Continue moving forward.
Are there any affordable housing?
About to go, go up in affordable house that you know of?
No, sir.
Based, based on the new, uh, median, uh, and that, that's another statistic that was out there. The median home value now in Putnam County is $187,000. Uh, that number is triple over the last couple of years. And so, uh, one of the things we've got to look at consciously is how we continually, um, provide livable wages for our employees and our citizens and encourage businesses to come in so that, um, people will not be in a position where, um, they cannot do anything other than pay for somewhere to live. And so those are some of the things we have to look at. When you look at places like St. John's County where the median home value is $500,000. And, and those things, um, make it very difficult for our service providers and first responders to be able to live. And so we have to just continually stay conscious. Uh, we've talked to the Housing Authority about a, about an affordable housing strategy in a combined meeting so that we can start to talk about where they are, um, with their RAT project. They've started moving forward again as well as, um, some of the other opportunities that exist. I spoke to, um, Chairman Neshua, um, and he's encouraged about the opportunities that exist for us to partner and to do some, some forward-thinking things within the community. So we, again, thank you very much. Um, Mr. Dennis.
Uh, nothing to add from the gas authorities tonight, sir.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Jones.
Okay, so we, um, the city of Palaka participated in Career Source's, um, job fair today, which was, um, a success. We had 14, um, different businesses that participated. Um, however, the traffic flow of applicants was not what we actually expected, probably due to the rain. But we, I did gather some very, um, good information on advertising for the city. Um, she will be hosting another one, hosting another one in three to four months. So in that, I think the city is going to take a bigger part in, um, doing the, helping to advertise and get the, um, information out, um, to the public. Um, which I think she liked in that, um, area, um, this time, but we will do, um, we'll participate even more in be helping her to do the advertisement. Also on tomorrow, and I asked that all, um, department heads as well as employees spread the news for our, um, employee appreciation, um, lunching tomorrow between one and three. Um, with hamburgers, hot dogs, drinks and, um, desserts. So we need all employees to just come out and that way we can all communicate and just socialize, um, and get to just spend that kind of time with one another. And that's all that I have today.
Thank you. Mr. Griffith. You sure? You want to give an update on the votes?
Commissioner Campbell.
I'm sorry, Pastor Moberly, before we get to you, Commissioner.
Nothing much at this time, Mayor. Thanks.
Can you talk a little, can you give a quick second on your mentoring and how you're going to tie that in?
Uh, yes, sir. Uh, since you insist. Yes, sir. Uh, we, uh, been afforded the opportunity to, uh, mentor about 22 young men, uh, in this community. Uh, we, uh, started out, uh, with North Point Youth. They saw uh, what we were doing with them. And so we were asked approached, uh, to continue that mentoring program, uh, with with young people here. So, uh, certainly been a privilege and honor and joy to, uh, share with these young men. Just trying to engage them and, uh, just trying to give them, uh, some life issues, deal with, uh, topics and certain things we can talk about. Uh, age appropriate. So, uh, certainly, uh, yes, sir, we are, we, 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 uh, that's what we, what we're doing. I'm on the road driving, so that's why I'm kind of like.
All right, we need to pay attention, Pastor. Commissioner Campbell.
Good evening, everyone. I apologize that I'm not able to join you all this evening. However, I am grateful for technology and being able to still chime in on this evening. I just want to give a quick shout out. After the strategic plan meeting on the other day, I had the, um, opportunity to join Lieutenant Johnson, Officer Robinson, Lieutenant Snyder, Officer Solis and Officer, um, Norcross in canvassing, um, the north side. We canvassed over in the area by Boca Park. We talked to several citizens, wanted to get their feel with regards to, um, their thoughts about, you know, what's going on in neighborhoods, what we can do better. Um, so that's, I wanted to give a shout out with that. We're looking forward to continuing those efforts on the north side and the various areas in the northeast to come. But I just wanted to shot, um, shot them out for taking the initiative to go out into the community and actually hear the voices, uh, or concerns and some even praises, um, with regards to our police department and what we can do to make our community more safer.
And if I can piggyback off that, um, immediate feedback came back from the community. Thank you all for doing that. Commissioner Campbell, thanks. And there was positive, um, input from members of citizens in the community. So thanks.
Thank you.
Anything else, Commissioner?
No, sir. That's it. Thank you.
Mr. McNair, I missed you.
Thanks for the recognition. Questions for, for God that's been in the seat for about 20 days.
Some of those, uh, golf carts from the, from the golf, uh, golf course and repurpose them. They're, they're going to trade them in for a thousand dollars. We may as well keep some new ones at the airport.
Ironically, made the same comment sitting there and I need two. So.
Don't forget the thousand dollars of batteries for each one for that in your budget too.
All right. No, so Mr. and Mr. McNair has hit the ground running. Uh, he's doing an awesome job and looking at opportunities for, he's already saving us money as a matter of fact. And, um, he's, um, created some new, um, opportunities as it relates to revenues and processes. And so we look forward to his leadership as we continue on. Um, and he will be coming forward, um, with some, some additional strategies for us as it relates to, um, to our ground leases.
Absolutely.
And so we look forward to hear it from you soon.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner McCaskill. Commissioner Bor.
Just want to give a quick update. Um, did receive a notice, uh, yesterday that, um, I was recognized, um, by the Florida League of Cities for the Home Rule Award, um, Home, Home Rule Hero Award. So that'd be some of the advocacy work that I've been doing. Um, so it'd be more, uh, things forthcoming or what have you. Um, dealing with a lot of bills, feels like House Bill 105, SB 224, uh, smoke-free zones implements allowing for municipalities to implement smoke-free zones. Uh, or, um, public parks, um, public, um, beaches, different things of that nature, or even the river. But I don't want to go into too much detail, but just working on various bills with a lot of legislators or what have you. So these kind of things help, help us locally here fight those, um, things that mean so much to our community here local. So there's other things that I, I'd like to share later, but this is kind of FYI. Also, I want to thank, uh, Chief Shaw for the fine job that they're doing, um, in the community. I've heard a number of different things from some of the people I've been in contact with and, um, I want to thank you guys for, um, the efforts you guys are putting forward. I know you guys got a lot of.
Nothing further, sir.
We just had a wonderful time down in Orlando last week, uh, with the, uh, Florida Black Caucus of Locally Elected Officials, um, forum. Uh, with the mid, with the spring conference, it was a great opportunity for us to be engaged, to be educated, um, to be able to bring back new things to the community as a whole. Uh, the commission went down as well as council. Um, we found Palaka recognized continuously throughout the process, but we also um, were able to figure out some additional ways that we could benefit the community as a whole and to be able to, uh, to work diligently towards greater solutions in the community. Um, also the leadership, I got an opportunity to visit uh, with our leadership Palaka group of directors. We had an awesome exercise. Um, there was, um, just a, um, it's been an awesome time for the, the opportunities that I've had to visit within the organization and just to see, um, very, um, the select group of leaders within our staff, um, began to really blossom and and do wonderful things. It was, um, it was a great meeting and, and again, hats off, um, to Mr. Holmes and his team for the work that they did. And also to Ms. Schenk, um, in bringing leadership Palaka here. And, uh, we look forward to having more as relates to the graduation in the future. And so again, to everyone who participated, job well done. And in closing, um, you know, it, it truly takes a village to raise a child. Um, we're finding that, uh, many of the things that are going on in our community are, are, are starting inside, um, the minds of young people. And in order to reach young people, you have to reach their parents. And the question always comes up, but what do you do when they're absent? And you go find them and make them be present. And so, um, Then you go find them and make them be present. And so at the end of the day, what we're going to do is we're going to start to engage parents within the community as a whole. Those who don't want to be parents, and we're going to engage them still. And we're going to hope that it, we're going to hope that this engagement spreads like an infection throughout this community of positivity. And so we're going to ask every citizen who wants to be a part of the solution to join me. We're going to continually regularly walk the streets of Palaka. We're going to continually gather people up so that we can start to deal with the activity. Those that are engaged in deviant activity should be in the minority. We will continually push forward. We will engage partnerships with law enforcement, with churches, with citizens as a whole. We won't have our peoples held hostage. What we will do is allow the people to be partners in what goes on in this community. You've heard from leadership saying that there is an opportunity to partner. You've got organizations like fraternities and sororities that are willing to come into the community and do just that. Not only must we identify problems, but we also must make sure we're a part of solutions. And so we're going to be a solution-driven community that partners up no differently than we've done in the past. We're going to revive things that work and we're going to create new things that will work better. And so as we begin to move this community closer to the point that we can truly say we're better together, we're going to just do that. And I don't care what outside voices walk into the room. At the end of the day, this room still belongs to the city of Palaka and its citizens. And the city limits remain in the same spot. My comments remain the same as they did a few weeks ago. My sentiments remain the same as they did. Palaka is mine, Palaka is yours, Palaka is ours. And we're not going to run away from the problem, but we're going to face them head on. And we're going to defeat violence in our community by any means necessary. Those are my comments.